Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we just want to thank you, Lord, for all of your blessings upon our country, our state, and especially our county. Lord, as we meet here tonight, Lord, I pray for your guidance and your wisdom, and, Lord, I ask that you direct this board and all of us here tonight to make the best decisions possible for the county that we live in and that we love. In Jesus' name we do ask, amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. Please note that public comment concerning agenda items, including the 74 express bus funding and the fluoride discussion, are welcome during this public comment but will not be taken later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for informal comments?
Yes, sir. Three people have signed. One, we have three people, two people have signed up for me.
We'll recognize the speakers signed up for informal comments. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their names, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. I'll first recognize the speakers who signed up online. The first speaker is Jennifer Stiles-Clark.
Hello. Good evening, Union County Commissioners. Thank you so much for not making me go after that adorable dog. My name is Jennifer Stiles-Clark. I'm a Union County resident, and I am here in support of the Union County bus route. I work for Bank of America. I've been riding the CAT 74X Union County Express Bus for the last eight years, as long as I've been a Union County resident. I want to speak to you about the present and the future of Union County that coincides with this route. I'm part of the present. I live here now because there is a bus that helps me get to work. Since the bus stop at Monroe was eliminated last summer, which needs to be revisited given the change in leadership in Monroe, those riders that could not get all the way to Indian Trail to ride the bus have been eliminated. People that need to visit doctors, family, and to seek employment in Charlotte. Since that stop has been eliminated, not only have riders been eliminated, but there have been many more conversations among those of us remaining riders about moving to be closer to a more certain public transportation option, a bus stop that's not consistently up for elimination, such as in Matthews. You will lose Union County residents with high-paying, white-collar jobs because of the constant threat of this route being funded year over year. Now I want to speak about the future. I work with a campus internship program at Bank of America that brings between 1,000 and 1,500 college students from across the United States to Charlotte every summer for internships. About 95% of those interns are offered full-time employment in the Charlotte area after their internships. All of these students, who are in their early twenties, grew up in a world where public transportation and Uber are the mainstream, and that is what they use. They drive as minimally as possible. That's over 1,000 potential new residents every year that ask myself and other bank employees where around Charlotte they live and how they get to work, and they make their decisions of where to live based on that convenience and on environmentally friendly options. I hope that you will ensure that I can tell the next generation of workers that there are transportation options to Charlotte, both in Indian Trail and Monroe, and that they should consider Union County as a place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is, forgive me, Sir Balaji Srinivasan.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Balaji. I'm a resident of Indian Trail. I've been living in Indian Trail since 2009, and I've been taking this bus for close to 14-plus years. I really enjoy taking that, and I've done a lot of, it's less stressful. And I did last year, I was here trying to convince you guys, and thank you for that. Did my MBA and all my higher educations through that, and thank you for that. One thing I don't need to tell about all the benefits, the benefits are out there. If you have the public transportation, like bus for me or anybody, you're taking cars out of the road and people and communities. It costs less pollution, less stress to the community who are taking the bus, right? So save money on the commuters, right? As Jennifer mentioned out, also, the younger generations are looking into economic mobility. Public transportation is the way by which they move, make it more mobile, in terms of economic mobility. And I've been reading, I had a chance to email it to Brian Hansen, and we see that the ridership numbers have increased since last time we met. So there are quite, like, there are, from July, it was 9:12, August was 10:74, September 10:85. The point being that ridership is increasing, and I would appreciate if you can still support the 74X bus going forward. And also, my humble request not to make it as an annual affair coming year and requesting for it. And maybe we can have a chat, that's a separate thing, but I want to make sure that we are funding it for the further future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Greg Mazal.
Good evening. My name is Greg Mazili. I'm a resident of Indian Trail. I'd like to speak to you guys this evening regarding the 74 express bus. The 74 express bus is not just a means of public transportation, but it's an improvement in the quality of life for the residents of Union County, mentally, emotionally, financially. Many of my colleagues most recently have informed me that a lot of the parking lots and parking garages around our place of employment, I work at Bank of America, have increased their fares, I'm sorry, have increased parking. If your schedule does not permit you to arrive to work before 7:00 a.m., you could be paying up to $185 for parking a month. And that's just something that myself and many of my colleagues really would have difficulty paying for if not for the 74 express bus. Emotionally, I like to say it's a benefit of the quality of life because many of us have grown great friendships on the bus. Several people have retired, and the most recently, and they've come back to the bus stop to, you know, say their farewells and goodbyes to everyone. Mentally, many of us have used the extra time to catch up with our work, pursue postgraduate work or a degree, and it's been a jewel, a secret jewel that we have, that we're looking to see if we can help others within the community find out about as well as yous. So I'm asking today that we continue supporting, or that you guys continue supporting, the 74 express bus for now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mazili. Our next speaker is Harold Schmucker.
Evening. Harold Schmucker, Waxahaw. I read the pro-fluoride links in the agenda, including the CDC letter to send to Mr. Joyner. I believe the CDC may have unintentionally made a stronger argument for ending fluoridation. Their entire justification is built on the premise that the poor have the most tooth decay, and the most economic way to help them is by water fluoridation. One of the studies referenced made the claim that it will save about $28 a year in dental treatment by reducing tooth decay by about 25%. I don't know if you see the flaw in this argument or not, but the poor communities are the ones that can't afford a filtration system. They're the ones most likely to be drinking the unfiltered tap water. Just about everyone I know in Union County filters their water, and I don't see that factored in anywhere in the discussion. If fluoride is effective, then the low, the poor communities would have lower rates of tooth decay than those filtering out the fluoride. Next, I want to look at the dishonesty of the CDC around this, basing what I would consider a bait-and-switch strategy. They refer to fluoride as a naturally occurring and already found in water, and they are just adding, or they're just increasing, the concentration of the fluoride in the water. This is misleading. They are not adding natural fluoride from the earth. They're adding toxic phosphate fertilizer, industrial waste called hydrofluoric acid, that we're told contains some fluoride. There's not a single mention of hydrofluoric acid anywhere in any of the CDC information or the pro-fluoride documents. It appears they don't want you to know this. Let me make a simple analogy. Let's say your child's lunch is the fluoride, and a full bag of kitchen garbage is the hydrofluoric acid. Would you disperse your child's lunch in the garbage bag and tell them to eat the whole bag of garbage so they can get their lunch? That is what the CDC is telling you to do. Eat the whole bag of industrial waste so you can get your fluoride. A little more honest than the CDC is one of the nation's largest hydrofluoric acid distributors. They prominently display on their website the range of arsenic found in standard hydrofluoric acid and also a high purity version. They show with standards between five parts per million and 50-plus parts per million of arsenic. Yes, 50 parts per million plus. So eat your arsenic at possibly levels 50 times greater than fluoride so you can get your fluoride. The high purity version is less than five parts per arsenic, five parts per million of arsenic, but 96% of all of these use the standard. Then you have the transportation liability and handling requirements. One 55-gallon drum is diluted with water, 75% water, 25% hydrofluoric acid. One fact to learn is it only takes one tablespoon to kill an adult. So in one drum, you have enough to kill about 4,000 people. Why not remove that liability and take that dangerous substance off the roads and rails to Union County? I'm asking you to end the public water fluoridation. I'm also asking that you directly call out the CDC's dishonesty and misinformation in your decision. It's a double tax. You pay for the fluoride, and then you pay for the filters to remove it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Dennis Shabat.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, sir, for pronouncing my last name correctly. I appreciate that. I'm here about the fluoride issue in Union County. It's a concern to a lot of people, water supply issue with that. There's just a lot of, I feel like misinformation out there about it. And in doing my research and seeing the studies that were done, understanding the history behind it, the 40s and 50s, they are to benefit dental health and well-being. I feel like that is not a necessary thing anymore in the sense that a lot of alternatives to the fluoride issue have been used, which, if you read about it, is why most European countries have stopped introducing fluoride into their water because there's a lot of different alternatives that you can do that would be more beneficial. Fluoride in the water over time can lead to a lot of different bodily functions malfunctioning. It damages your bone structure, which affects a lot of children because they're developing their bone structure. It also leads to arthritis, osteoporosis, muscle damage, fatigue, a lot of other things. The main concern, for me especially, is that what the fluoride does to your blood and your blood sugar, it increases it while at the same time inhibits your natural body's insulin. So it can lead you into a stage of pre-diabetes, which eventually might go into type 2 diabetes. And I'm already a person who has type 2 diabetes. So then it makes me start to wonder, if I'm continually drinking this water of fluoride, is my body going to be battling between me having the type 2, taking the meds, but then the blood sugar increasing because of what's in the water? So it just raises that concern for me. So I just feel like you guys definitely should research it more. Citizens are concerned about it, and, you know, a lot of us would want the fluoride removed from our water in Union County. Oh, and I'm sorry, I didn't say that in the beginning. I'm a resident of Waxahaw, so I am a Union County resident. It's my first time speaking, so sorry about that. And thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Shabat. Are there any other speakers who have not signed up who wish to speak?
I have a study that I'd like to present to you guys, if you don't mind. Today, I'm going to be talking as well about the fluoride in the water. Hi, Commissioners, again. Again, my name is Joel Down, and I am a resident of Wesley Chapel. Today, I'm here to talk to you about the fluoridation of the water. And I'm not only speaking on behalf of myself, as I have previously, but also my mother, who I live with along with my family in Wesley Chapel. We, me and my mother, both believe that it's bad to add fluoride to the water. A study that I have presented to the clerk there, from nature.com as of 2018, was conducted by seven different researchers, whose, unfortunately, the names I couldn't pronounce. It was conducted in Iran and found that the higher fluoride concentrations in the water tend to correlate with higher thyroid-stimulating hormones, or TSH, values. And according to Cleveland Clinic, TSH value, higher TSH values can cause your portuitarian gland to trigger your thyroid to create more hormones. Those hormone levels, whether higher or lower than normal, can cause different health issues. But if the hormones are higher than the normal amount that your body's supposed to have, what can happen is, one of the symptoms is unexplained weight gain, and if it's lower, then it's unexplained weight loss. One thing that we, me and my mother, don't understand is, if the people, if we, why are we paying for this if all the residents within the county don't want it? Why can't each county resident add it as they need to? Now, obviously, there's the residents of Union County that are on well water and whatnot, and well water comes as it is. You can't really change that, of course. But is that, are we going to now require for, to not have the fluoridation in the water, require every resident in Union County to then dig a well for themselves if they don't want it? So we just ask that you not allow the water to be fluorinated when it comes to our residences, is that each resident can decide on their own if they want to add the fluoride to the water. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers who have not signed up who wish to speak?
Hello. I apologize for being a little bit late. I was, my name is Dr. Carrie Dove. I'm a pediatric dentist. I represent the North Carolina Academy of Pediatric Dentistry.
Excuse me. Dr. Dove, sorry. You are actually signed up to speak within the fluoride.
I am. Okay, sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Yeah, no, sorry.
I gotta, okay. I'm sorry. I'll be back.
That's good. We have a lot of people wanting to speak tonight. Are there any other speakers who have not signed up who wish to speak? All right. Next on the agenda is item 24-022, recognition of retiring Fire Marshal Kevin Rigoli and K-9 Camden. I will recognize Deputy County Manager Patrick Nylund for this item.
Thank you, Chairman. Before I get started, I'd just like to recognize a few people. We have members of our Fire Marshal's Office, our Emergency Management Department. Kevin Rigoli is here, his wife and his sister is here, so I just wanted to recognize them, say thank you for coming out. Today is a bittersweet day for Union County. After decades of public service, Kevin Rigoli has announced his retirement at the end of the month. Kevin has been Union County's Fire Marshal since 2015. Kevin began his journey in 1989 when he joined the U.S. Army. He served in Operation Desert Storm. He then joined the city of Monroe, where he served in several public safety roles until his move to the county in 2015. Kevin has also been a lifelong member of the Mineral Springs Fire, Volunteer Fire Department. Shortly after coming to work for Union County, Kevin became the handler for Camden. Camden is the ATF Accelerant Detection Dog. Camden was originally being trained to be a scene eye dog. Unfortunately, Camden couldn't stay out of trash cans and flunked out of the program. That's fortunate for Union County. Because of that, Camden was able to be trained as the ATF's Accelerant Detection Animal. Kevin and Camden have worked over 500 scenes in their time together. Their work together has been used to close several high-profile cases. Many of these cases have given closure to family members that were impacted by fire. His work has taken him all over the country, oftentimes with very little notice. It's not surprising to get a text message at 3 o'clock saying, "I'm heading to Roanoke Rapids," or Richmond, Virginia, and he never complained about it, he never questioned it, he just did it. This work has also allowed Kevin to train the next generation of local, state, and federal employees. He spent a great deal of time training, teaching at the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center in Glencoe, Georgia. Kevin's only real flaw is that he's a Cleveland Browns fan. Despite this, Kevin is a true public servant in every sense of the word. His selfless dedication to the county cannot be overstated. I consider it an honor and a privilege to be able to work with Kevin over the past five years. While it is a loss for the county, there is no one more deserving of that. Kevin always says, "We're in the helping business, and I love helping people." We will miss that from Kevin. On behalf of Union County, we extend our sincere appreciation and wish him nothing but the very best in retirement. So Kevin, congratulations. Kevin, if you'd like to address the board, and then I think we have a few things.
Okay. Yes, sir. Oh, just right here. Sit. You want to sit? You want to come up for a picture?
Yeah.
Come here, Bob.
Camden.
I'm sorry that Union County. So just in closing, there are all kinds of people out there that I want to thank for investing in me when I was a laborer, trying to figure out my place in the world. I thank the board. The entire time I've been the county Fire Marshal, the names and the faces have changed, but your dedication to public safety and fire service in this county is never laborer. Without the support of the board and the county manager's office, the fire departments that I and my staff serve would not be able to do the jobs that would be day in and day out for the citizens that we enjoy serving. So thanks to each of you from the bottom of my heart, and thanks to everybody that's entrusted me for 30 years to do what I do. A lot of people tell me every day that if we don't give them pay, then that's what we do. But if you paid us what we thought we ought to be making, there wouldn't be any other sacrifice. We love to do it, sir. So thanks to everybody that's trusted me to serve the community that I love so much. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is item 24-044, Resolution to Support My Future NC. I will recognize presenters from My Future NC for this item.
How do we pull up the presentation? The presentations?
Good evening. Thank you to the board for allowing us to present tonight. I'm joined here with Dr. Maria Lander and Jessica Garner from Our Future in Unison. My name is Sinemet Olutunji. I serve as one of the Regional Impact Managers for My Future NC, serving the Southwest Prosperity Zone. So My Future NC is a statewide nonprofit focused on North Carolina's educational attainment goal of having 2 million North Carolinians between 25 and 44 having achieved an industry-value credential or post-secondary degree. It is important for me to note that this is not My Future NC's goal. This is a statewide goal and was codified into law with bipartisan support. And so currently, North Carolina has about 1.5 million North Carolinians, ages 25 to 44, that hold a post-secondary degree or industry-value credential, and we need about 400,000 more folks in order to meet this goal of 2 million. And so currently, we are tracking about 30,000 below. My Future NC is going to release our new data on February 15th, and currently, the state is tracking positively towards this goal. And so how do we do that? To achieve our goal, My Future NC accelerates action in local communities. We identify and advocate for policy solutions, and we are required through legislation every year to monitor and report progress towards the goal of 2 million by 2030. And we do this across four key transition areas. So we are focused on academic readiness, college and career access, post-secondary completion, and labor market alignment. We do this by also monitoring 18 key performance indicators, and if you can see here, you can see where in these four different key transition areas where we are trending flat or trending down across the state. And so My Future NC is focused on these priorities for big bets. We are focused on on-time post-secondary enrollment and And so My Future NC is focused on these priorities for big bets. We are focused on on-time post-secondary enrollment and persistence. With our focus, our key efforts being around our FAFSA pilots across the state of North Carolina. And then also our financial aid summit that we started last year, convening partners across the state to increase FAFSA attainment. We are also focused on our adult learner enrollment and persistence efforts, and this is through our NC Reconnect. We cannot get to 2 million by 2030 if we do not get more adult learners in the classroom. And lastly, we are focused on labor market alignment with our key efforts being NC workforce credentials. So identifying what are those workforce credentials that are going to be industry valued and are going to get us to 2 million by 2030, as well as working with our HBCUs and those convenings across the state. My Future NC also produces high-quality data that we present to our local partners. And so we have our county attainment profiles, which is our most popular data tool, and this is unique to all 100 counties across North Carolina. On these attainment profiles, we have local performance on key indicators, and then we also have our recommended local goals. So while 2 million is a lot of people, each county has a local goal that is going to help us get to our 2 million by 2030. We also have three opportunities for growth on each of these county attainment profiles. So if a county does not know where they can begin in terms of the work of educational attainment, we have put those local, those key, those three opportunities for growth there for a local community to get started. For Union County, in 2020, the top three opportunities for growth was NC pre-K enrollment, FAFSA completion, and career and college promise. And then for 2022, it is NC pre-K enrollment, math performance, and reading performance. I think it's key that we do not discard those 2020 key, I mean, opportunities for growth and just roll them into the work that we're doing in 2020, 2022 and beyond. We are also doing the work of our attainment-focused communities, and this is coming from the work that we did. We started in 2020 with our local education attainment collaboratives. And so working with counties to endorse the state attainment goal of the 2 million by 2030, adopt the local attainment goal, one of the reasons why we are here tonight, develop a local attainment action plan, executing this action plan, and increasing local attainment. And I'm going to turn over the mic to Our Future in Unison to talk about what work is underway locally through Our Future in Unison.
Good evening, and thank you for having us today. And I'm the program coordinator for Our Future in Unison. And as Sinemeth mentioned, we have our local goal of increasing by 5,000, the number of 24 to 44 years old that have a degree or a credential of value. Our mission in Our Future in Unison is improving and supporting the community, education and economic mobility in Anson and Union Counties. And our vision is to create a prosperous future for all individuals in our communities in Anson and Union County. Our values are equity, innovation, and collaboration. We have a core team that is, has representation from Union County Public Schools, Winger University, Anson County Library, Union County Chamber of Commerce, South Pittman Community College, Anson Public Schools, and Anson Public School, I'm sorry. But we do our actions and meet our goals through four work groups that have representation from the community. And those are adult literacy, recruitment and career and college readiness, community connections, and labor market alignment. We have received support and resolutions from Anson County Public School, Anson County Board of Commissioners, Central lineup Workforce Development Board, South Pittman Community College, Union County Public Schools, Union County Chamber, and Winger University. We have accomplished in this last year many, many successes, and some are, we have enhanced community event, raised in a reader play poster contest that focused on early childhood education. We have increased community awareness. We're part of Thrive Union and also Anson Care Network. We have increased FAFSA completion rates. And also, we have given access to resources and opportunities through bringing organizations into Union County that focus on that. For example, the Academy of Goal Achievers, and also the Latin American Working for Achievement, among other successes.
I want to talk to you just for a minute about some of the initiatives that through this collaboration, we have seen benefits for in Union County. So the first one is really around the FAFSA. As we know, this is a key, and so we are, in Union County, we are lucky enough, through this collaboration, we have drawn the notice of the John M. Belk Endowment. So we've got a grant that we're going to be working on with them. And so this is very exciting. We've started this work as the FAFSA has just slowly sort of opened, I guess I will say. We have also partnered with the Academy of Goal Achievers. This is a nonprofit that supports high school students in their post-secondary journeys. And they have actually expanded from Charlotte into Union County, and they're supporting lots of students in Union County. You can see the schools on the screen that are being supported by this. And then the last thing that I just want to quickly mention is an aspirational event that was held at Winger University. You can see that we had three students from Union County, but you can see that the scholarship dollars that were earned that day at, from Winger University, this was a wonderful collaborative event that really served a lot of different students, and it's just kind of the beginning as these partnerships really start to grow. So we are here tonight to ask you if you would join us in this resolution, and so you have that in front of you, and we'll take any questions that you may have. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that matter?
First of all, let me say thank you to the speakers that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Yeah, first of all, let me say thank you to the speakers that presented tonight this item. I will say that, you know, I've got some concerns, you know, with the organization that has brought this item to us. I'm a little concerned with the lack of local representation on the executive board. And so as I understand it, this is an initiative there that has involvement with both Union County and Anson. And at this point, I don't believe that I'm ready to vote for a resolution on this particular item.
Any further discussion?
I would just say that I agree with Commissioner Brian Helms. There definitely were some red flags for me when I started researching this program. I think as far as education for our young people, whatever, we truly need to get back to reading, writing, arithmetic, cursive writing, phonics. And although I recognize their area focuses for 25-year-olds to 44-year-olds, there seems to be an area of focus that I don't think aligns with the majority of Union County residents. And especially with the Gates Foundation, that was a red flag for me, and the testing, the over-testing of our young people in the classroom and being identified by a test instead of their God-given gifts and talents should not be identified by an EOG score. So I definitely am not ready to support this tonight without further discussion. And I'm available to have those conversations.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chair. Mr. Vice Chair, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like, I'll make a motion that we just tabled this until yet-to-be-determined future date to allow us to do a little bit more research, maybe on the organization, perhaps get more information on the program. You know, I want to be clear, as I made this motion, and I think that, you know, there's general consensus, at least from the board. I can't speak for the board, but only myself. But I will say that, you know, there's a general sense of support for education and a general sense of support for what they're doing. However, I think at this point, we've got some questions that should be addressed before we make a commitment to support this resolution.
Any discussion on the vice chair's motion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye. Aye. All opposed? The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Are there any other revisions, or are there any revisions requested to the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye? Aye. All opposed? We are now at the business portion of our agenda. The first item of business is item 24-030, 74 Express Bus Funding for Year 2025. I will recognize Bjorn Hansen, Senior Planner for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Matthews. This is a follow-up from our discussion two weeks ago where we alerted you to the need to make a decision for funding in concert with commitment from the Town of Indian Trail, made quite a bit of progress, and have a lot of updates over the last two weeks. As background, this service has been around for nearly 20 years, and ridership did drop quite a bit during COVID, but it has started to recover. And as always, we have limited transit funds, so it's a decision of where to best allocate limited dollars. Back in two weeks ago, we said that we were at a bit of a scheduling conflict between Indian Trail's ability to commit, which would be later this spring, and our need to make a decision to continue into FY25, which would be at the beginning of the year. And Indian Trail communicated that they were comfortable that they were going to be able to include this in their budget later in the spring, but they couldn't make that commitment as of right now. So we brought this back to you tonight after letting the riders know of this potential decision tonight, and several of them came and spoke. I have a list of emailed comments that were submitted. I printed out some copies that are up there by Lynn West's seat if you wanted to review them. But they are just give different reasons why the system is, and the service is valuable to them. So what's happened since then? We gathered some additional information and documented all the sources of outreach that have occurred since the service was reduced to just the one-stop Indian Trail. You can see this postcard, which actually went to Janet Payne from Human Services. She was a resident of the area and received one of the cards. You also have us posting it on our website, and you also have this flyer that was distributed to the riders. CATS also did a remarkable job of outreach, and I do want to note that we do have the director of planning for CATS, Jason Lawrence, who's here on my right, and Teresa Torres from Union County Transportation as well. So they sent, did a lot of outreach. We obviously alerted the riders, and Indian Trail, in response to a lot of the outreach from riders that was received, has actually scheduled it for their town council meeting on January 23rd to approve the inter-local that we presented to them back in the fall. So we have great momentum relating to this. So as a recap, you really have two choices. You have to continue the service in FY25, and it sounds like that we have an agreement that will get executed soon that will include the next fiscal year. But if they don't, we still recommend keeping the service into the next fiscal year and continuing in the future if ridership continues to rebound significantly. Or you could choose to cancel the service. That would be effective in June. So we do have the CATS and Union County Transportation representatives here to answer any questions, as well as myself.
Any questions for Ms. Hansen?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chair.
Bjorn, so if I understand this correctly, so where we're at right now with our numbers is we're seeing a trend upward, but we're not quite where we were before.
That's correct.
But we do anticipate ridership to increase.
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, I've had some discussion with some of the folks there in Indian Trail, and I think that there's, you know, a general sense of support for this program, and, you know, we did receive an email from Mayor Cohn in support of it as well. I guess for me, you know, what I would have concern with is, this is a service that I think is a good service, but it's got to make sense. It's got to make sense for both the county and also Indian Trail. And so I would be at least inclined to try to support this, at least for FY25, and just sort of see where the numbers fall at the end of that. But I think that, I think that we have to, you know, at least realize the possibility that if ridership does not increase, that, you know, we may be revisiting this in the near future.
And from our last discussion, it had not increased from our original discussion a year ago. I don't see the same data in tonight's presentation from what we had at the last meeting, but if my memory is correct, ridership was significantly low.
Compared to 10 years ago or four years ago, that's certainly true, but compared to one year ago, that's not true. Ridership has increased a good bit, and in fact, it's increased even after reducing the stops from two to one effective October 1st, so.
I don't think we were discussing data from 10 years ago. I think we were discussing data pre-COVID, which was less than four years ago. It was pre-COVID data is what you presented. I don't recall receiving data from 10 years ago. I think I'd remember that. But we had significant discussions about pre-COVID ridership versus where we are today. But if you want to add to that, I would love to hear from.
Well, the 10-year reference is important because that's approximately when ridership peaked for this service, in the early 2010s. And it slowly decreased until 2020, and then, like everywhere across the country, ridership really dropped. And so now we're at less, a little less than half what it was pre-COVID. And that is increasing, and I think it's increasing due to broad issues relating to return to work, as well as increased parking costs in downtown Charlotte, but also because of the significant outreach that CATS, Union County, and Indian Trail have accomplished over the last few months. So I think the wait-and-see that Commissioner Brian Helms said, that's certainly appropriate. We're going to need to re-engage with Indian Trail next year for the inter-local agreement anyway, so this issue will come back to you regardless.
And I remember us having that conversation a year ago when we talked about, you know, if we were going to go towards a different model of transportation. And it just hasn't seemed to have increased very much since us having this conversation 12 or 13 months ago. But, you know, if we can get the ridership up, I am all in favor of public transportation. But, you know, we have to be physically responsible with the money that we have because I remember running the numbers the last time, and we literally could buy our riders a car with what we're spending. But then I remember one speaker said that you would not want her on the road, so I do remember that. But, you know, at some point, we have to be physically responsible. $120,000 is a lot of money. And two weeks ago or a month ago when we had this conversation, I remember the riders on the AM and the riders on the PM were low. So it's something, you know, we certainly need to keep an eye on, and I agree with Commissioner Brian Helms. We, you know, we had this conversation a year ago. I don't mind, you know, I can support going to 2025, but that would be two years of me going along with something that in my gut, you know, gave me. going along with something that in my gut, you know, gave me a little heartburn on $120,000. But I think that's where we are.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Haines.
Bjorn, kind of along the same lines, but can you expand? Do you have any information? Does the 74 Express still stop in Matthews? Is that stop still?
No, it never stopped in Matthews. That was a proposal, but it does not.
Okay, maybe I was just thinking of what was proposed. All right, thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? According to the county manager, we probably need to make a decision on this tonight, or we can delay it until February at the latest.
Correct, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we continue the 74 Express service funding for FY25, you know, with the understanding that we will be revisiting this in FY26.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of continuing the 74 Express bus funding for year 2025 indicate by aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next matter of business is item twenty-four, dash, zero, three, one, Union County 2050 Implementation Committee Recommendations for Stormwater and Broadband. I will recognize Bjorn Hansen again for this item.
Well, there you go, a little bit of a curve ball. Sorry about that. Before we get into the presentation on stormwater and broadband, there's been a lot of discussion about stormwater and flooding issues throughout the county. And I thought since we were talking about stormwater tonight as far as the comp plan, it would be appropriate to have a brief sort of presentation on just stormwater overview and what stormwater is and what it's not, what the county does, what state does. So just kind of a little outline here. I'm going to hit on the regulatory framework, so the world that kind of stormwater lives in and how it's regulated, who regulates it, how our reviews work and how we work in conjunction with state-level folks. What can the county do? So, you know, we already do a little bit, but are there other things that we can do or we should be doing? So talk a little bit about that and talk about a potential study that we are hoping to do with Wesley Chapel and Indian Trail, and that was at the board's direction. You made a motion a few months ago to ask us to work with the staffs of those towns, and we did, and we're working through a proposal to do some studies out there. And a couple of little slides about how we work with other county departments on tracking rainfall data and road closures, and both of those are related to, or road closures related to storms and flooding. So you kind of have two primary components of how stormwater, I'm sorry, three primary components of how stormwater is managed. You have sedimentation and erosion control. You have post-construction, and then on the next page, you can't see it yet, you have floodplain management. Sedimentation and erosion control is generally what happens, that's what happens while a site is being developed. So usually when you drive by a site and you see where it's been graded, all the trees have knocked down, there's probably a big muddy-looking pond and a bunch of black fences along the property, that's a sedimentation and erosion control that came from their plan, from their sedimentation erosion control plan. That's administered by the state of North Carolina in Union County. There's very little detention benefit. Those ponds are there to collect sediment that runs off the site so it doesn't leave the site, so it doesn't go into neighbor's properties or into streams. And same with those black silt fences that you see, that's there to collect sediment. So there's very little detention at all associated with sedimentation and erosion control. Post-construction stormwater measures are kind of broken down into two separate categories. You have water quality and you have water quantity. Water quality is just what it sounds like. It's treating runoff, so usually it's treating the first inch of runoff on a site, and it removes the pollutants from that, from that water. In Union County, that state-administered, we were, we were, we called tipped in about, gosh, ten years, maybe even more than ten years ago. It was based on our population growth rate. We grew so fast that the state has some measures how they'll tip you in. Normally, if we were a town and we owned roads or sidewalks or any kind of public infrastructure, we would be doing it ourselves. That's a requirement. But we don't, we don't own any of that stuff, so the state actually administers that for us. And in water quality, there's some detention benefit because, again, it's treating that first inch of runoff, but it's not a lot. So, you know, that generally, big storms, just those first two, sedimentation, erosion control, and water quality, those just kind of, big storms just kind of pass through the system. Water quantity is really where you get into having some sort of detention benefit. That's locally administered. We do have some water quantity standards in our ordinance. However, we don't really regulate a lot. That next bullet point, our requirement is that we regulate to the 25-year storm event only for certain development types. That's generally cluster subdivisions, so when you take a, I talked about that this morning, when you take a large, like a hundred-acre parcel, maybe you can get a hundred acres on it, but you build that on, say, fifty acres, and the rest of it's left as open space. We do require detention 25, of this 25-year storm in those. And any rezoning that is a conditional rezoning that comes to the board, we ask that that be a condition that's placed on that rezoning. That last bullet point is just kind of, just kind of for information. NOAA, which is the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, they are updating the storm frequency data, and don't hold me to this because this is preliminary data, but it, some of that data does show that storms are kind of moving up one level. So for example, you know, 25-year storm may be now a 10-year storm. These aren't adopted, so, you know, we don't go by these standards yet, but I just wanted to point that out because we are seeing bigger storm events more often. And the last one is floodplain management. These are FEMA guidelines that are administered locally, so we do manage our own floodplain development standards. We participate because as part of being a participating community in FEMA, we get, our residents get to buy flood insurance. If we didn't participate, they would not be able to buy that. At the county level, we only regulate the unincorporated Union County and the town of Hemby Bridge. Our standards are higher than the federal minimums. The federal minimums do allow a good bit of development in the floodplain, as long as you either elevate the structure or put in floodproofing measures or flood vents. We don't allow really any development except for what you see here. You know, we allow agricultural activities, parks, as long as you don't build any buildings in the floodplain and really roadway and utility crossings because you've got to be able to, you've got to be able to cross the floodplain. The way our reviews work from a stormwater standpoint is, well, number one, we review only for the post-construction water quality review. That's the only thing we do. The sedimentation erosion control and water quality is done at the state level. We don't have a stormwater manual right now. Bjorn's going to talk about that a little bit more in-depth in just a minute, so I'm not going to go too far into it. But essentially, that's the playbook. That kind of sets the standard. You have these rules that say you have to design to the 25-year and detain the 25-year storm event. This manual sort of tells you how to do it and how to design it. And that's a real generalization, but that's the gist. So we don't have any prescribed guidelines for how those things are designed. Our stormwater engineer and developers use best management practices to determine what that proper design is. The NCDOT, they do play a part in this as well. They review stormwater systems for roadways, culverts, roadway ditches, piping systems, anything that's in the public right-of-way, they review. And then North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, they review that sedimentation and erosion control plan and for water quality. So what can we do? You know, I've told you what we do now, but what can we do more? The answer is yes. We can get local authority to regulate our own or take over our own sedimentation and erosion control program. We would be held to a very high standard by DEQ. A lot of, I won't say a lot, but some counties have taken this over. We have, I think DEQ assigns one inspector, three counties? Yeah, so we have one county, but that inspector covers more than just Union County. So it's multiple counties that that person covers. So, you know, if there's a big rain event and a sediment pond, you know, blows out somewhere, that inspector's probably not going to be on-site the next day to see it. It might be a couple of days before they're able to come out. And we would need additional staff to be able to manage a sedimentation erosion control program. We could also take on a full stormwater program where we have water quality and quantity both in-house. Again, you know, we can't do it with one person, so we would need some additional staff and some equipment to be able to go out. And, you know, part of this is if you do that, you need to make some repairs to things, so we would need equipment to be able to make repairs. I just pulled some general numbers on here. There are multiple counties that do this, and it seems kind of backwards because I know in municipalities, you have a lot of municipalities that have a full stormwater program, but they don't have sedimentation erosion control. And I think, but it seems like from a county standpoint, the county started with sedimentation erosion control first, and then if those counties then got tipped in, because there's more than just Union County that got tipped in, then they just said, well, we already have the resources to do this, so we're just going to take on our water quality in-house as well. Because cities have been, Brian and I had a conversation about this. I think cities have done it, have done water quality for a long time and have never done sedimentation erosion control. So again, it's kind of reverse of the county. So these three examples, these numbers are, they do both of these things. So Gaston's about 11.2, and you can see the numbers there. And then there's other counties that do this. I don't know what the number would be for Union County. If you're interested, that's something that we could, you know, we would want to bring back at some point. The last thing is, you know, we could go the status quo, kind of what we do now, but with some increased regulation. Again, you know, you could look at adopting a stormwater manual, looking, you know, developers looking further downstream if you know about flood-prone areas and requiring some sort of mitigation, detaining to a higher storm event. So for example, we require that 25-year storm, you could look at maybe a 50-year storm. And again, you're going to hear Bjorn talk about some of these exact same things in a minute because some of these were recommendations in the comp plan. Expand, develop, expand regulations to more than just what we do now. So instead of just applying it to those cluster subdivisions, you know, apply it to every type of development or, you know, some, you know, more than just cluster standards. You know, that, there is a cost associated with that. We do have one stormwater engineer, so that could be a potential issue. And we could do more localized studies. I would look at this one, hopefully that we're going to do with Wesley Chapel and Indian Trail as kind of a benchmark to see, you know, is, was, do we get a good result out of it? What are we seeing? And maybe looking at, you know, that to potentially do more. There, again, there's a cost. You have to actually do the study and pay for it. And then you have the results of the study. So we could do the study for not a lot of money, but the results of the study may say, well, we need to replace this culvert, or we need to fix a pipe or whatever. And so those are big dollars, kind of like the Critical Intersection Program. We, you know, we spend a little bit of money to do the, to run through the program and to identify these intersections, but then we actually put real money to fix intersections. And then you have jurisdictional issues. So if we did a study and we said this is going to be our reach and we do this study, and then all of a sudden, a town upstream has some massive rezoning, well, it may just blow the whole results of the study out of the water. The last thing here is you could look at increased buffers based on future floodplains. The example is Mecklenburg County. They have what they call swim buffers. I don't know if that's still what they call them. That's what they called them 20 years ago when I worked for Mecklenburg County. There's a huge cost to that program. Essentially, what they did, they took their Future Land Use Plan, they applied it to parcels in Mecklenburg County, and they said, this is the future impervious area we'll see. So this is where, this is the floodplain now, this is likely where it will be, and that's how we're going to regulate. So it is increased regulation, and you're probably going to get a lot of, you would get pushback from landowners and developers if you went down that path. Again, talk about the study a little bit. It's a joint study. It's not, we don't have interlocal agreements signed yet, but we have talked to their staff probably on three separate occasions, Union County, Indian Trail, Wesley Chapel. It's be a study of essentially Molly Branch watershed and a limited study. I know this is a long name, but these are the actual names that show up on our stream maps, and a limited study of the unnamed stream through Wesleywood subdivision and East Fork of 12 Mile Creek, Tributary Four. So we're looking to do some limited studies of those watersheds. We have a draft scope of work that's being completed. It's being sent around to, for the experts to look at to make sure that it covers everything we talked about. Once that's finalized, we'll go through the RFQ process for engineering services and hopefully get started on it. Last two slides. So we currently work with emergency management to, we have a network of 15 rain and/or stream gauges. Some of those are ours in planning. Some of those belong to emergency management, but we sort of jointly use them, and that helps us track historic rainfall events, and it helps us determine severity of storms. So if somebody calls us to say, hey, I saw flooding on my property or, you know, some road flooded somewhere, we can go pull our data, and we actually have access to a network of private rain gauges as well through that program. So we can look to see, based on the amount of rain we got in certain periods of time, how large that rainfall event was. And then we also track road closures. So we started working with emergency management to, I had a nice little map up here. For some reason, it's not displaying, but we started doing this with Florence, and now we've just kind of kept going. So I really wish you could see this map because it's a cool kind of heat map that shows where the road closures are and how often they happen. And what that helps us do is it helps us maybe identify some problematic areas when it comes to roads and places that flood, where citizens and, you know, emergency management are having to go out and put up those barriers to keep people from driving through stuff. I'll be happy to take any questions about kind of the regulatory framework and anything I've talked about, but next I want to hand it over to Bjorn to talk about the comp plan stuff. If I have any questions for me.
Are there any, or how many counties are that do that besides the three that were listed?
There's, there's a number, I'll be honest with you, I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get you that information.
I mean, is it a lot, or do you have any idea?
I don't believe it's half.
Or do they do?
I want to say 20.
They do it in different forms or fashions or?
Most counties that do it, most counties that do it, that I've seen, again, I didn't pull up, I have a map, but I didn't pull up every single county. I pulled up ones that I thought were kind of similar to Union. Most of the ones that did it that I saw did both. I know that was a little bit opposite of how cities work, but most counties, if they did it, they did both of them and not just one. But the way they do it could be different, and that's why, like Gaston County, that number is so high because they also do it for a lot of those small towns. They're a lot like us, and I think Gaston has something like 15 municipalities, maybe 16. They've got more than we do. And I think they do it for a number of those smaller towns in their, in the county. We wouldn't be in that same situation. We wouldn't do it for all the municipalities. A lot of them have their own programs already. So our numbers would probably be a little bit different. But I'll get that information for you, and I'll pass that to Brian so he can send it out. All right, well, I will turn it over to Bjorn to.
Mr. Chairman, one question for you, Lee, just on the, just to follow up on JR's question, you know, something like that. Any idea about how those? question, you know, something like that, any idea about how those programs are funded?
Some of them are actually a utility. So that would be, if anybody live in towns, you probably see that on your tax bill, where you have a stormwater fee. That's a lot, that's mostly how, especially a post-construction water quality program is funded. Everybody that lives in that jurisdiction would get a fee. There's a number of ways you can, I won't go into the details, there's a number of ways that fee can be calculated. I mean, it could be a flat fee or based on impervious area. So post-construction quality, that would be how you do it. I have seen a few of them that just did it through general fund, which, you know, that's, I guess that's a way as well.
Basically, it is calculate how much it costs to run a program, and they spread that amongst all the taxpayers.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So I want to thank Lee for introducing a lot of the stormwater materials, because we are at a point where, from a planning department perspective, we're getting into subject areas where we aren't the experts. And so as I present on stormwater and broadband, I want to note that we have John Emilio, the IT Director, and we have Brian Hawkins, a stormwater engineer, as you have, if you have drill down questions on the actual topics. But this is a follow-up from, just like Transit, from two weeks ago, where we introduced the topic. We said we have a lot of information to present, we have a proposal to take two at a time over three consecutive board meetings, and you agreed with that. So the first two that we're presenting is, again, stormwater and broadband internet. So we're going to introduce these strategies. Ideally, you are going to review them and make a decision on whether, yes, you want us to continue to develop these, or no, these are not good ideas, are not appropriate for us ever, or just at this time, and we won't pursue them. Or some, you may just have a lot of extra questions, and we'll put them on the side, and we'll bring them back at the next meeting with more information for you to help make a decision. So again, stormwater and broadband is tonight. So stormwater, we have these icons on the left to show that they have linkages to other issues in the comprehensive plan, which are cluster developments, preservation of rural character, and then stormwater. So starting at the top one, adopting the Charlotte Mecklenburg Stormwater Design Manual, this doesn't mean that we're adopting it, like, including the city seal and everything. It just means that it forms the basis for us to then make some tweaks and make it our own, which is how most of Union County's municipalities who have stormwater programs actually graduated to this level. It makes it predictable. Right now, every individual development that comes across Brian Hawkins' desk is like a unique situation, they have to come up with a process. It burns a lot of time, it makes it unpredictable for property owners and developers, and makes it more challenging for Brian. So the recommendation that coming from committee and from the planning board is to adopt this manual into our development standards, and maybe make some tweaks, but generally adopt their manual. And since this is the first time we're doing this, we're kind of setting a routine. Do you want me to stop and ask for questions, or run through all of them? Okay. We'll do that. The next one is require additional mitigation when known flooding areas downstream, when there are known flooding areas downstream of development. This is very straightforward. If you're developing land and you know that there's already a flooding area downstream of you, should you have to do more mitigation, maybe more open space preservation, maybe larger detention basins, et cetera, as a response to that awareness? The third one, increase the runoff coefficient to the next highest standard when mass grading. This sounds very technical, but it's actually really important. Our soils here, if you have just pasture land with a good topsoil to it, the water, when it rains, will soak into the ground. When you scrape off that topsoil, because you're moving the ground around to grade it for a development, you end up with a lot of clay. And then if you put two inches of sod on top of it, once that sod has absorbed all the water it's going to absorb, it behaves like a parking lot, and the water will run off. So this is saying that if you are going to mass grade your development, you need to assume that more of the water is going to run off, meaning that you need larger detention facilities, pipes, maybe buffering to accommodate that additional water that's coming off of your property. The next one is talking about, just like what Lee mentioned, 50-year storm. Currently, if we require stormwater facilities to be designed, we design them to the two and 25-year standard. This says, let's move up to the 50-year storm, which means a larger storm. The next one is, when should we apply these standards? And this says that we would apply them if the overall development is an acre of disturbance, or there's a quarter acre of impervious surface. So if you are breaking out an individual lot for a home in the country, this is not going to apply to you. But if you develop a subdivision of 10 homes, it's going to apply to you. And then lastly, this is something that did not get recommended by the planning board, it's to increase county funding for retrofit programs. We do have small pots of money through Soil and Water Conservation District to do education and projects for stream restoration, or bioswales, rain gardens, things like that, to reduce runoff and increase awareness of water quality. And it's been well received, so the recommendation was to do more of it, but the planning board did not agree. So you have a conflicting vote there. So I will stop with the stormwater topic and ask if you have any questions.
I have a question, and you may not be able to answer this, but it looks like the planning board was not unanimous, obviously. And I would just appreciate some feedback if the county manager or yourself can tell us what the thoughts were coming out of the planning board.
Hello? Oh, go ahead. I mean, it was, I mean, I don't know what the math is for 86%, that'd be five out of six, maybe? So you had, you had one member of the planning board at that meeting who just did not want increased development standards on property owners or on the development community.
Yeah, and as far as being able to have a dissenting viewpoint, I don't know that we went into that depth. It was really more the vote, 86%. Typically, that was one individual said, I don't agree with this potential recommendation. Vice Chairman Helms and Lee and I had a pretty robust discussion this morning, and we appreciate that. So what we want the board to understand and take away from this is that there's all kinds of ways to go at dealing with stormwater. All of them require some action by this board, whether it's increased regulations, or it's actually have a stormwater utility program. Be aware that a full-blown stormwater utility program is not inexpensive. It has a pretty large cost to it. And what we're saying to people is that we intend on repairing and fixing issues that they have. That's what a utility is for. Beyond that, there's a little bit in between that you can do. But from our perspective, I don't want the board to think this has just now been something we've been thinking about. Stormwater has actually been brought to past boards in Union County over about 20-plus years. Past boards have looked at possible stormwater regulations, they've looked at a utility, and I will say, for whatever reasons, those boards felt that making changes were not appropriate at that time. We recognize that there's always going to be an issue with stormwater, especially when it rains a lot. And so obviously, it's on people's minds when they get to see it, and you get folks coming to see you and telling you about all the problems, and then when we have a drought, you don't hear from them for a while. So this is us trying to get ahead of you, let you know that this is not going to go away, we're going to always have concerns, and just trying to get some feedback from the board on how do we move forward with this, and we'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Now, Mr. County Manager, in your previous experience, and of course, I'd hate to put you on the spot. When you were in Stallings, did they have such a program?
We did, we had a stormwater utility when I was there. While I, it was very beneficial, it was not inexpensive, and we couldn't correct all the problems. It's much like anything else, there's only a certain amount of funding, and you had to prioritize. And we had to come up with a rank and method for how do we put some projects over other projects. And that took us a little while to figure that out and put that in place. And it was beneficial, but from a county perspective, that is much harder, it's a lot of land area to deal with. And the other thing about it is, we don't regulate within side municipalities. We only regulate within our borders, and stormwater doesn't recognize a political subdivision. It doesn't stop at our boundary, it keeps on going. So, you know, those are challenges that we would have to deal with as well.
Mr. Chairman. Brian, thank you, I appreciate you sort of bringing up that discussion that you and Lee and I had this morning. And Bjorn, thank you for the explanation on these items. You know, when we discussed this this morning, I was sitting in my office, which happens to be located in Charlotte, North Carolina, and it was raining this morning. And I made the comment to Lee and Brian, I said, I said, gosh, I said, the first one of these that you got on there is to adopt the Charlotte Mecklenburg Stormwater Design Manual, and I'm sitting in Charlotte Mecklenburg right now, and, well, Randolph is flooded. So I'd like to, first of all, reiterate, you know, one thing that you said is, is that this would be a starting point, as I understand it. And there's no difference between that and, say, model building codes or model plumbing codes. So for the general public who may not be aware, the way that this works is, is that you would essentially, like a state, for example, the state of North Carolina would adopt the International Plumbing Code. And then they may make amendments to that code. And once you change one single word, then it no longer becomes that code, now it becomes the State of North Carolina Plumbing Code. So I think that where staff is trying to go is, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would be using this as a model to develop our own stormwater design manual. And, you know, we've had, all of us here on this board have received numerous, you know, notifications, emails, phone calls, you know, text messages, whatever it might be, especially regarding a lot of flooding events right now in Wesley Chapel. So I, for one, am at least thankful that we're talking about this and discussing this, because, you know, when it comes to things like this, you're really talking about someone's home. You're talking about how it affects them personally. So I don't really have a question regarding that, but I feel like, you know, maybe some additional explanation may be warranted on that.
Yes, so I want to, as our conversation, it is our intention to use this as a framework, and then obviously, make changes as necessary to fit the unique characteristics for Union County. But you have to have a place to start. Otherwise, what we would be doing is paying a consultant a great deal of money to come up with our own plan, and in a way of trying to be more, trying to be better stewards, we think that it's probably easier for us to go in and remove things that don't apply, or make changes where they would be better suited for Union County. So that was the logic behind using that as a starting point.
And I would note that where it says tax amendment, the process you went through just a few weeks ago with the ADU discussion, that process would follow for all of these, where staff and some sort of consultant team, or maybe a citizens committee, I'm not sure, would come up with the recommendations, it would go to the land use board for an official recommendation, then it would come to you with a public hearing for a decision. So to do, taking action tonight to greenlight any of these just directs us to start that process.
Well, personally, I'm inclined to be rather bold with these committee recommendations. I mean, I think we're at a point where I feel a real sense of urgency regarding a lot of these stormwater runoff issues, and I would personally be in favor of approving the committee's recommendations. And Bjorn, these two other ones that...
Have the NA?
Yeah, that are not applicable. I would be inclined to support those as well, but could you share a little history on?
The reason why they say NA is because at the staff level, we did not include it in their final meeting for a vote. And then afterwards, we thought it had been included in a larger discussion, and then we realized that we hadn't, and we just couldn't get a meeting back together. So they, the committee allowed it to be at the discretion of the planning board to essentially speak for them.
And they approved it 86%? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Well, I'm in favor of starting the process and with every single one of these recommendations, personally.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chair.
I'm in somewhat agreement there with Commissioner Williams. I think that I would be in favor of at least, you know, at least directing staff to come up with these implementation strategies on the first five, but excluding the last item on this list, which would increase county funding for retrofit programs. In my opinion, you know, something like that item there would bring us in the direction of a stormwater utility, and I don't know that we're, as a county, ready for that step at this point. So I would be in favor of the first five, excluding the last item on this current list.
Mr. Hanson, do you know how many like-sized counties or counties similar to Union County have these programs in place already?
I do not. I'm going to look to see if Brian has any information about that. He's shaking his head as well. Again, we can research that and bring it back to you.
Yeah, I think Lee was saying that, you know, if we had to make a guess, it's probably less than half of the 100 counties, but we don't have the exact number.
I just think we, I mean, this stuff is very important, but sometimes you have to be careful what you ask for, because it comes with a big bill.
One of the things that Lee pointed out, that we didn't talk about it a great deal, and I want to make sure that the board fully understands the impact, is that if we do, if the board decides to go down the road of a sediment erosion control program, the state is notorious for treating those jurisdictions much more strongly than they do themselves. They don't have enough inspectors to actually cover their territories, but they expect that if you take on that duty, you're going to have enough people to do it, and they're going to hold you to that. That's not saying that's a bad thing, just understand, we're going to be held to that standard, even though DEQ doesn't hold themselves to that same standard. The other part of a utility, if we go down the route of a utility, is that, you know, obviously, we'll have to calculate what that fee is, there's funds for that, where that we then decide where projects are built. And one of the things that we don't control is we don't control NCDOT. They actually make their own decisions for stormwater. We can certainly partner with them on a lot of things, but they themselves make their own decisions about what they're willing to do or not willing to do within their right of way and their own stormwater decisions. So not trying to certainly push the board in one direction or the other, just want to make sure everyone is aware, those are the things we'll have to deal with.
So if I perceive what you just said, would that be a staff recommendation not to do all of these? Because it would raise the standards, and then we would be more under the microscope.
So I'm going to clear, I'm going to make a recommendation that I would not take on a sediment erosion control program. I would leave that to the state, that would be my recommendation for the board. I believe that the first five items are certainly doable, and they are things we should be doing, but I want to make clear, those do not fix anything that's already exists. All that does is do moving forward, it has nothing to do with problems that already exist within the county, that's a whole different bucket. The item of increasing funding to retrofit, you don't have to create a utility to do that, you could just set aside funding that we would do, and we establish certain types of retrofit that we would say these are for. But as Commissioner Helm said, it is dipping your toe into the direction of possibly being a utility. You don't have to create a utility, but it's moving you more in that direction.
Mr. Chairman, I will say that during the discussions with the... Ms., Ms. Chairman, I, I, I will say that during the discussions with the, with, with the committee, they did, um, they did consider, um, a, a utility. So a full-blown utility was something that, that was talked about, but it, it was taken off the table early on with, with the stormwater committee. Um, they, they sort of went along the same lines of discussion you are. They said, you know, that's a, that's a heavy lift, um, it's a lot of money, we, we don't exactly know how it, it would be funded. Um, they had some concerns with, you know, with the fee or, or increase in the, you know, the general fund. Um, and they also had some concerns with staffing. I mean, they, they know a full-blown utility requires a lot of staff. These sort of five items right here were, were sort of seen as some things that we could do based on current staffing levels, um, that, that wouldn't really add to a, a huge budget increase, really any budget increase, to be honest with you. Um, you know, a lot of these things, you know, the, the stormwater man, manual mainly is, is, is gonna make, if, if it was adopted, would make, um, our stormwater engineers' life a lot easier. So instead of having to negotiate back and forth with, um, trying to figure out, well, what's the right method to apply on this certain development, i- it would be in the manual, and we would just look at it and say, well, there's, th- this is what you have to do. Um, so, so, so these, these five are, were kind of seen as, as a compromise. You know, the board, or, or the, the board that adopted the comp plan said, we need to do something about stormwater. Well, what do we need to do? We don't want to go full-blown utility, but we need to do something, and these five were seen as that, as that something. Does that, does that help a little bit?
Mr. Chairman. Uh, ju- just for, just for clarification, uh, Mr. Matthews, um, when you were talking about the, the sediment, um, control program, um, the, the five, or well, the six items that we're looking at here, uh, are, are any of these related to that sediment control?
No, these are really water quantity, um, items, not water quality. Um, now, obviously, um, you could get into the water quality component of it, but it really is water quantity that you're dealing with.
Yeah. And, um, for the record, I, I tend to agree with your recommendation regarding, regarding that. Uh, but with, at least with what we're looking at here on the current screen, these six items do not pertain to sediment. We're only talking about water.
That is correct, yes, sir.
And so technically speaking, you know, the board could approve, you know, any of these, um, items, um, and none of this is gonna pertain to, or go against your recommendation regarding sediment. I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear, you know, regarding what we were looking at here.
Yes, sir, you are, you're 100% accurate. That is a completely different program.
Thanks, sir.
I, I do want to say, um, that the last item, I think, is actually a, a very good item we should aspire to. I think we should, as a county, aspire to having some funds available when we're talking about retrofitting some of the issues in, in the county. Are we ready for that? And that's really up to you guys if you're ready, because that's a funding. We have to fund that somehow. And then we have to decide how we're gonna use those funds. Um, it, it's much like, uh, Lee pointed out with our, um, our intersection improvements. There's, for a long time, we put no dollars in any kind of transportation improvements, but what we realized is that, in order for us to see change, we had to have some skin in the game. And so we put some seed money into those DOT projects, and it helped us actually get some benefit out of that. So I see that this is something we should look at. You have to decide that this year, next year, five years from now, I think it's important. It may not be the time for us to do it. That's really the board discussion.
And there are currently no funding for those programs?
So what we current, what we receive now are grant funds. So our, our, um, Soil and Water Conservation Group, um, for the county, we get some funds at the state level. We then identify streams where we do some stream restoration, stream cleanup, some projects like that. Those have been very successful, but we're using, um, the state's money to do that. As Lee pointed out, you don't have to make a decision tonight. You, you obviously can, you think about it, you can ask more questions, you can give us direction at the next meeting or, or later if you want, but ultimately, we're, we're gonna want to have some direction so we can start. This is gonna take a little time to put these in place and bring them back to you for text amendments, i- if, if the board's direction is to move forward with some of these items.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Williams.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, the board approve, uh, these first five recommendations, uh, five of the six, and, um, I'll read these off if that's necessary, otherwise.
He says you don't need to.
Okay.
Any further discussion on Commissioner Williams' motion?
Mr. Chairman, um, yeah, I'll, I'll be in support of Commissioner Williams' motion. Um, a- and I also understand what our manager, um, our county manager, Mr. Matthews, was saying about the sixth item. Um, and I don't necessarily disagree, but, uh, but I feel as though, uh, you know, we're gonna have to take this thing kind of one step at a time here. So, um, I will be in support of, uh, Commissioner Williams' motion. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of, uh, the motion made by Commissioner Williams, say aye.
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 All opposed.
Thank you. The next topic is broadband access. This is something that, a decade ago, I don't think, I don't think a county in the state would have been actively talking about, but things have changed. So, this is a, a variety of strategies. It could be advocacy, it could be text amendments to the, um, uh, county's ordinance, it could be to develop a plan, could be a whole new program. But, uh, first topic is to focus on affordability and accessibility for broadband programs. This is something the committee recognized that broadband isn't free for most people, and so just because there's a, a line in front of their home, doesn't mean they can necessarily afford it. And so, as we partner with private sector companies on grants, as we put out educational materials or consider putting out education materials, we focus on, um, educating the public about the affordability of internet and how to reduce the cost in addition to just making it accessible to them. Uh, the next recommendation was to not just say, everyone should get satellite internet, or everyone should get fiber optic in their front yard. There are different strategies that work best in certain areas. Uh, in the more rural areas where it just, it's very challenging to run fiber optic everywhere, the answer might be Starlink type of satellite internet. In other areas where it's more dense, running fiber optic is, is more appropriate. So, um, not being tied to anyone, technology was the recommendation coming out of the, the committee. Uh, third one is to require affordability commitments when funding broadband grants. As we are asked to partner on subsequent applications through the state or even federal levels, uh, we can sharpen our pencils and include some, some, uh, requirements from our end that the provider commit to maybe subsidize internet, um, for certain types of, uh, demographics. And, um, this can be written into our, our agreements as we engage in the future. Next one is to raise awareness of subsidized broadband programs. Again, there's a lot of initiatives out there. We're not saying that we need to subsidize people's internet, but we need to make sure we effectively get the word out and are able to help people, um, figure out what works best for them. Establish a sta- a standing broadband access committee. When we presented these recommendations, or presented the, the issue to the, uh, Board of Commissioners a couple of years ago, uh, we had several say, I don't know anything about this, this lane. I really need experts to advise us. And thankfully, here in Union County, we have a lot of capable residents who, who stepped up and served, uh, very admirably on this committee and provided a lot of great industry insider insight. And so having that committee exist to help, uh, vet grant applications or initiatives or emerging, uh, trends on this topic, uh, would serve the Board of Commissioners very well. And then next is to develop a broadband plan for Union County, and, and John Emilio, our IT director, can talk about what actually goes into such a plan, because, uh, I haven't developed one, I don't know what goes into one, but having one helps with competitiveness, it focuses our efforts, makes us eligible for more grants through, um, different funding sources. The next two didn't come out of committee, they were actually identified by the planning board. First one was to work with adjoining counties with poor service. You could think of where we may have a small pocket on the edge of the county or even the state line, and then the next county over has a, a similar pocket, and by themselves, each group is too small to be competitive for a, a grant, but maybe together they would. So just wanted to make sure that those people don't get left behind. And then lastly, have someone responsible for the outreach that we mentioned, uh, previously in these recommendations. Have a person who's responsible for being that, um, that outreach coordinator and education liaison to help the public with navigating these, uh, different programs that may be available. I did want to list a slide, uh, after this before you get into discussion to talk about all the things that have happened on the broadband internet front in the last, um, year or more. Uh, we have participated in the North Carolina Great Grant Program, committed a million dollars in ARPA funding to increase broadband internet to 1,900 residents. There's a second grant, um, in progress to provide additional internet to 100, to 150 homes. We have solicited input from residents on gaps in broadband in the county, worked with residents regarding, um, alternatives, options. So essentially, that, that liaison and education, um, person I mentioned earlier, outreach meetings with local agencies, including Union County Public Schools, to make sure that we're, we're working together and not at, at cross purposes. Creating the framework for the broadband plan so that if it's directed, uh, we know what we're actually putting out an RFQ for or developing in-house if possible. And then lastly, working with the Central Indiana Regional Council and North Carolina Department of, um, Information Technology to create a digital inclusion plan, which is, is a component of the overall broadband plan to, uh, increase engagement and, and awareness and digital literacy for, um, segments of our population. So going back to the broadband access slide, um, I'm happy to answer any questions I may have. I have John Emilio here, and, um, otherwise, same, same issue as what we just went through with stormwater. Um, you have what the committee recommended, you have the planning board recommendations. These were 100%. So no dissent, but, uh, again, just looking for direction on, on how to move forward.
What, what you don't notice on this is you, you don't notice a recommendation, um, to increase funding for that. Now certainly, the board can always consider that. The funds that were used for those programs came out of your ARPA dollars. So that's where those dollars came from, that, that supported the CAB program as well as the, the first application for great, uh, great grants. So the board can always add to this by deciding in the future that you want to add additional funding to assist with broadband connectivity within the county. These items are really more about advocating and not necessarily the county trying, taking an active role in making it happen. Uh, we don't run and operate broadband, I don't think we're actually allowed to do that, um, but the General Assembly has made it so that we can contribute if we like to. So I just want to make you, you didn't see that, but that is always an option the board can choose in the future.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman, go ahead.
And Brian, just for clarification, when we're talking about advocacy, we're talking about a variety of different things. We're talking about looking for potentially, uh, grant opportunities, we're looking for, um, you know, partnerships, uh, raising awareness, things of that nature. Can, am I missing anything? Can you go into more detail there?
I, off the top of my head, those are the items I think we would focus mostly on. I mean, there, there's always a, a, I think, when, and Bjorn may be able to add to it, but there's always things that'll come to us as we do those. We'll say, oh, with this county, is you, you do, doing this particular, um, advocacy, that looks like that would work for us. But off the top of my head, those are the things we would concentrate on initially.
And, um, as far as the, let's see, that, the item here to develop a broad blank, a broadband plan for Union County, um, you know, we had talked a little bit about this, but thi- this is basically identifying, you know, weaknesses or, or potential areas there where, you know, we, uh, we don't have good service, or maybe, uh, something that we should look at or potentially even invest funds into at some point.
Yeah, so the, the, the good news is, is that we're not creating the data. We get the data from the state, um, we're able to then look at unserved and underserved areas. Um, we're able to identify, um, areas that we think might be suitable for grant opportunities because you're able to maximize your, the investment for that. And obviously, these broadband providers are looking for that. Otherwise, they'd already provided it, if they could do it more economically. So they, they can't. So in order to help that, the state has said, well, listen, we're gonna, we're gonna help by giving funds to identify areas that financially aren't necessarily, uh, making good sense for the, for the private company, but if they're able to receive some grant dollars, it makes it more affordable for them to, um, put that project in place.
Okay. And that last one there, identify county employee responsible for helping citizens with broadband access. So with something like that, will we be just potentially looking at a new hire? Will we have a county, uh, employee, a county associate there, um, take on a different responsibility? What, any thoughts on what we would be looking at at that point, or at this point, I should say?
That's a good question. So, um, I, I would say initially, we would try to see what we could do with our staff that we have. Uh, unfortunately, I'm not gonna know how far that's gonna go till we actually start doing the work, and it may lead to a position that we have to hire. I would start off by trying to do that in-house, understanding that we may have to bring it to you and say, we can't do this with just in-house, we may have to bring additional staff in.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from Mr. Hanson, or any further discussion? I will make the motion that we move forward with these eight recommendations. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
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 None opposed?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Hey, would my, Mr. Chairman, I, I know the next item is actually the, um, the barn update. If you wouldn't mind, I would ask the board's consideration of moving the fluoride item up as next. We have individuals here to actually talk about that item, and, and I think it would be a, a good idea to allow them to go so that they don't have to go through the rest of the presentations. That would be my suggestion and the recommendation.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is item 24049, fluoride discussion. We have several people addressing this item. I will note that there will be additional opportunity for public comment during a later meeting. I will recognize the first speaker regarding this item, Mark E. Ross, DDS. Mr. Ross is gonna speak to us virtually. Uh, Moss, I'm sorry.
Could you hear us, Dr. Moss? Must not be able to hear us.
He's on mute.
Not sure if you can hear us.
Okay, I think I found it.
Yes, sir. There you go.
I apologize. Thank you so much for taking time, and, uh, I do appreciate the care that you put into your meeting. This is, uh, you know, speaks highly of the work. I'm here as a representative of the public health community. My role is an associate professor at East Carolina University. I have a dental degree and I studied, oh... representative of the public health community. My role is an associate professor at East Carolina University. I have a dental degree and I studied, oh. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Are you there?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here to tell you a little bit about the work we've done to look at the safety of community water fluoridation. We find that there is a good amount of research out there to support the safety of this. It's been looked at multiple ways and more studies are in progress. In your packet, there's quite a bit of information. I wanted I feel like there's a lag in what I say and what you hear, so I apologize for that. I want to say that the information in the packet is hitting a lot of the key pieces. One important piece is the way that some of these studies have identified a high level of risk when there's high levels of fluoride. And that's important to factor in when you're looking at the levels that we're exposed to in the U.S. The levels that we are exposed to in community water fluoridation in the U.S. are much lower than these that are in some of these studies. So I just would like to stop here and let others speak because I feel like the audio is not ideal. I appreciate your time.
There's a lag. The screen is watching. He's good.
Commissioners, I think the best course of action is just to move on to the next speaker, and we will try to get Dr. Moss's comments to you in writing. And I believe Dr. Nick Nadei is the next speaker.
All right. So Chairman, fellow commissioners, thanks for letting me speak today. I will recognize Dr. Moss and say that, you know, while working in the public health sector, he probably does a lot of great things. I will wholeheartedly disagree that fluoride is safe, right? And here's why. Fluoride is not a nutrient. It's not a mineral, right? It's a neurotoxin. So my assumption is we all have families, and we've all heard of lead and mercury, also neurotoxins, right? I don't want my children ingesting lead or mercury, so I wouldn't want them ingesting fluoride. So even the CDC, which is where the data came from in the packet, acknowledges that fluoride content on a tooth has little bearing on whether or not the tooth will develop a cavity, right? Says the benefits are topical, not systemic. So while topical application of fluoride may be beneficial, right, fluoride in our drinking water bears no benefit to us, right? Fluoride is also not in any natural human metabolic pathway. Doesn't exist. So the FDA, right, likes to classify fluoride as an unapproved new drug, right? And despite over 60 years of fluoride being added to the water supplies, there hasn't been a single randomized controlled trial on the effectiveness or safety of fluoride. So we put fluoride in the water because we say it's going to help prevent dental caries or cavities, right? But the main cause of tooth decay, not cleaning your teeth, snacking, right, refined carbs, sugary drinks, right? And most cavities are going to be found, right, in lower income neighborhoods, right, with poor nutrition and lack of access to dentists. So when we look at it, fluoride is added to the water, and it's added to the water for the purpose of medical treatment, right? And it's the only chemical added to water for the purpose of medical treatment. Now, where have you been where you get medical treatment that isn't life-saving, that you don't get informed consent, right? It doesn't happen, right? So now we've taken away informed consent from the citizens. We don't get a choice. So it sounds like we're going to need a lot of money for some of this other stuff that's going on, right? Broadband, stormwater, right? How much does the fluoridation process cost the county? Also, when we look at parts per million that's in our water, there's no regulatory guidance on it, right? And I think Union County sits at .61 parts per million. If you look at average toothpaste, it's probably somewhere between 1,000 and 1,500, right? So seven, I think, is the cap, .7. But nobody regulates that. No one comes to it, right? They leave the onus up to the cities and the counties, right? So now, where does the liability fall? Right? We look at studies on fluoride. I think there's been 85 studies about cognitive decline. I think out of that 85, 76 of them show a cognitive decline, lesson of an IQ, right, in adults. So we like to go to the CDC for a lot of data, right? We like to point at the CDC and say that they get to tell us all these things. So let's just take this straight from the CDC's website, right? So fluoride is supposed to help prevent dental caries. So among adolescents aged 12 to 19, more than half, right, 57%, have a cavity in their permanent teeth. All right, among adults aged 20 and older, about 90% have had at least one cavity. And currently, one in four adults aged 20 to 64 have at least one cavity. So 25% of adults aged 20 to 64, right? And we've had fluoride, I think, in Union County since 1963 is what was on the county's water website. Okay? So a lot of years having it in there. Where is the data that shows that it's efficient? All right, there's not one. And even yesterday, right, in Dallas, Texas, the fluoride expert for the EPA said, hey, we know that fluoride's a neurotoxin. All right, the director of the CDC had no data, no studies to show that it's not. And this is where we get our information from. Questions from you guys?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. How prevalent is water fluoridation in the rest of the world? And then how prevalent is it in the rest of the, you know, more modern industrial world? I mean, like Europe?
Sure. So there are 195 countries. Currently, eight use fluoridation in their water. Eight. Europe has banned it. Most countries in Europe have banned it. Does that answer your question? Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Doctor Nadei, if you don't mind, you made a comment where you were talking about fluoride and the treatment there regarding dental care. And you made the comment topical, not systemic.
Yes, sir.
Can you go into a little bit more explanation of what you're referring to there about systemic? Just for clarification for anyone maybe watching at home or in the room, please.
So systemic refers to in the blood, right? So we're ingesting the water, we're ingesting the fluoride, and it's going to build up in our system. So it'll be systemic inside of the body versus topical where you go to your dentist and they apply it, right, to the enamel of the tooth. So, and if you look on the CDC's data, EPA, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, those are the studies that show that it helps when it's applied topically. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir, it does. Thank you. Mr. Chair, one other question. So I want to make sure that I understood you correctly in what you presented to us. So you said that fluoride is listed as an unapproved new drug, and therefore, could you reiterate the testing that's performed there? I believe you went into some degree of explanation about the testing that's performed on fluoride.
So the FDA has no randomized controlled trials, which is kind of the standard for testing. Nothing that shows the efficiency of fluoride or the safety of it. The other studies have been carried out. A lot of the studies have been done overseas, not a whole lot in America. There is one study, I won't be able to quote it. It was done by a dentist, and it showed lack of efficiency systemically in fluoride as well, while it did show benefits topically. But most of the studies are going to be done on a neurotoxin level, what can cross the blood-brain barrier, things like that.
Thanks, sir.
I have another question. With prescription drugs and indeed, over-the-counter medications, you know, you look at the label and there's a recommended dosage. How do you dose appropriately when fluoride is in your drinking water?
That's an excellent question. There is no RDA for fluoride, recommended dietary or daily allowance.
So if you're, let's say, if you're a mother with a baby, and that baby is exclusively formula-feeding, you know, that baby with lots of developing systems and a developing brain and nervous system and bones, potentially is getting a lot more fluoride than, you know, maybe somebody who's a grown adult.
They could be. I know that we have a pediatric dentist who could probably speak more to that data. I will tell you that there was another, there's a thesis statement written in, I think it was published in 2006. It was from a dentist at Harvard, actually. And her statement that she was standing on was bone cancer, right? That fluoride would lead to osteosarcoma, which is a bone cancer mainly found in men during the second growth stage of childhood, ages six to eight in boys. And to date, no one has been able to say that the study was done wrong or there was, you know, wrong information in that study.
Now, for those who, you know, like fluoride, you know, believe in it, want to use it, believe in its efficacy in terms of dental health, is there a scarcity of products out there that they can use to, you know?
No, sir. There's plenty of availability of fluoride in products on the shelf that we can purchase.
And the fluoride in those products tends to be medical-grade fluoride, right? Unlike, you know, the fluoride that gets added into...
I wouldn't be able to answer that question. I haven't looked at how the FDA regulates the fluoride going into toothpaste and food and drinks.
But the point is, if folks want to, you know, believe in fluoride, want to use it, they can choose to buy products that, you know, that, you know...
Yeah, it gives them back their informed consent.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Carrie Dove.
Thank you. Sorry to speak out of turn earlier this evening. This is the first time I've ever done this, so I appreciate it. My name's Dr. Carrie Dove. I am a private-practice pediatric dentist, and I represent the North Carolina Academy of Pediatric Dentistry. I'm their secretary treasurer right now. And I'm not going to stand up here and claim to be an expert in one thing or the other, but I do work with kids every day. I take a lot of kids to the operating room that have cavities. Cavities are still the number one chronic disease in children. And I want to do, my heart and soul is in prevention. I treat every kid like my own, every patient like my own kid. And I only recommend what I would do for my own children to other people. And this is definitely a public health issue. So, I mean, the kids that are the highest risk are the ones that benefit from this. There, you do see, you know, I use my recommendations from the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry. I'm going to have those recommendations. I was asked to do this a little bit last minute, so I'm sorry I didn't submit them to you ahead of time, but I have them for you. And there is, I mean, there is a, you do see a decrease in cavities in these higher-risk kids. And I just, I see it every day, you know, trying to help them, help these parents do what they can to, so that these kids aren't going, missing school and going to the hospital. I mean, I wish cavities would go away, but they're not. And unfortunately, they're not, there's not one thing you can do to fix them. They're very multifactorial. And so, you know, if there is, you know, I think the, if you look at the numbers, I think that's a very important thing when you look at these studies, to look at the concentrations. I think, I mean, any, any good thing, too much of it, is not good for you. So, I mean, if you took any medication or anything that, you know, you had, it would not be a good outcome for people. And I think that, you know, we've looked at what concentrations are helpful, and, you know, everything is, you know, risk benefits and options as far as what is going to be beneficial. And I believe, you know, I don't, I'm very careful in talking to all my patients, like most parents are, you know, you know, where would you be getting this? Is this, we've pretty much gotten away from prescribing, like, the supplements, just because it is out there, thankfully, in a lot of places. But, you know, we heard some statistics about how many people have cavities, and that's with fluoride. So what are we going to do when we don't have it out there available for people? I can't even imagine. I mean, every, everybody has cavities right now. It's unbelievable. And like I said, my knowledge and recommendations just come from working with kids every day that I love very much and from following the recommendations from my organizations. And if there's anything I don't know the answer to, I'm happy to get it to you this evening when I get home. But I just come to speak from the heart, and I just want these kids to be, they just, they don't, a lot of the higher-risk kids don't have a lot going for them, and I just think they need to be able to get what they can get, however they can. And I'm happy to answer any questions or take questions or thoughts or, I would also like to say vitamins. If anyone takes vitamins or supplements, those are also not FDA-regulated or recommendations. They're just, it's not the only thing out there that is helpful to people. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, there were a number of speakers that weren't able to attend tonight. A lot of those did provide written information, and a lot of those, I do think, planned to attend the next meeting to speak in public comment. So at this point, if there is any other additional information that the board would like, let us know, and we can provide that.
I just wanted, I just want to say thank you for those individuals who came to speak. Obviously, you took the time out of your day to come and sit, and we had a lot going on. So it was a little late getting to you, but I do appreciate your time and you be willing to come and speak to the board, because it does help them in making their decisions. So I just want to say thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'd just like to echo my gratitude, my thanks for all the citizens and the professionals who've come and spoken to this issue tonight. I understand in Union County, it's a bit complex in terms of water fluoridation. We've got the Catawba plant that is operated as a joint venture with Lancaster County. But we also have this new Yadkin plant that we've built, and hopefully will be getting water from soon that's entirely within the control and authority of Union County. With all that being said, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion. I'd like to move that this board directs staff to draft a text amendment to our ordinances that establishes as a matter of policy, a prohibition against water fluoridation, understanding, of course, that this wouldn't apply to our Catawba Understanding, of course, that this wouldn't apply to our Catawba plant, since that is operated as a joint venture. It would require the consent not just of Union County, but Lancaster. But I would like, do make that as a motion tonight, Mr. Chairman, and invite discussion.
Any further discussion?
Vice Chairman Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in support of the motion, and I, I think, well, first of all, let me say this, too. I also want to thank our speakers, everyone that stood up here and presented their expertise, their viewpoints. I want to thank our staff, too, for investing, you know, in this discussion, providing us, meaning the board, with the information that, that we've received to this point. I, I think that there were a number of different points that were made tonight. You know, we heard about the, the trials, or I should say, the lack of the trials. We heard about how this is classified through federal organizations. We also, you know, heard questions regarding informed consent. And I agree with Commissioner Williams. We do have some, some complications there with our partners with the Catawba that will have to be looked into. But I think that, that we should have a public hearing on this. I believe that, that we should consider a text amendment, and then we also should have a public hearing, perhaps at our next meeting, to discuss, you know, what this text amendment would look like, what the process would be, and how we go about, you know, potential next steps. But I think that there's considerable doubt at this point, you know, whether or not there is substantial evidence to support, you know, the medical benefit. And, and I'm, I'm certainly going to be in favor of providing folks' choice. We have a number of different products that can be purchased over the counter. We have a number of different products that are available should you want to use fluoride. And then, you know, you couple that with potential, you know, savings, although it might be small. But we would have potential savings, at least, you know, with the, the fluoride that we would ultimately put in our water. And, you know, small savings today, meaning this year, over the course of 10 years, can add up to be a lot. So, so again, I'll be in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams, would you repeat your motion again, please, sir?
Yes, my motion is that we direct staff to draft a text amendment to our ordinances that establishes as a matter of policy, a prohibition against water fluoridation. You know, with the proviso, with the understanding that, that's only in facilities that Union County has complete control and authority over, which would, at this juncture, include Yadkin, but not include Catawba.
And, and I'd like to just, can I ask for some clarification? So Jason, I, because this is, I believe, our water and sewer ordinance, I don't believe that necessarily requires a public hearing. Is that accurate?
This sort of a prohibition would not necessarily have to go in the water and sewer ordinance, but wherever it goes, it would not require a public hearing, and therefore, would require either a five-to-zero vote on the first reading, or would require two separate votes to pass it, if it's in the form of an ordinance.
All right. And to what I heard Commissioner Brian Helms, Vice Chairman Brian Helms say is that he, I think he supported the motion, but he was more interested in also having more additional public input. So my question is, is the board looking to treat this, much like we do a text amendment for our zoning ordinance, where we actually do have public input, a public hearing? Or are you more interested in having that brought to you, you consider it, and you take action on it? That gives us some direction on how to move forward.
I like the idea of a public hearing. I think now that, you know, this is getting pretty serious, and we're considering this as a, as a policy change, that this may excite some more public comment. And some folks may want to show up and, you know, write to us, speak to us, and, and let us know what they think. And I'm, I'm comfortable, I embrace this being a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, although a public hearing is not required, it is always in the board's discretion to call for an optional public hearing on any matter that it may consider. So even though it's not required, it certainly is permissible.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairman Hill.
Mr. Kay, would, if we wanted to pursue a public hearing, would that need to be a part of the current motion?
It would probably be best if the board expressed its will in the form of a vote to hold that public hearing at the next meeting, or whichever date you might choose.
Mr. Chairman? If I may offer a friendly amendment to, to include a public hearing on this text amendment change, possibly as soon as our next meeting. Would that be possible, Mr. Kay?
I, I believe it would. There's not a lot of preparation that's required to open up an opportunity for public comment on a specific subject.
Then I would offer that amendment, then, that, that we proceed with this motion, but also with the addition of a public hearing at our next meeting.
Friendly amendment, amendment accepted. And let me just say, in terms of the, the motion that's under consideration, you know, I, some of these health points, public health points are compelling. But for me, ultimately, at the end of the day, it's about consent, informed consent. You know, there, there are folks out there that are believers in fluoride and want to use it, and believe it's an efficacious product for dental health, and there are many who don't feel that way. This is the only chemical we add to our water that treats us. You know, we add all kinds of stuff that treats the water as well we should, but this treats us. And that's something in my mind that ought to be consented to. And so, you know, given that public water is something that is universally consumed, I think this is the right decision for me, and I, I appreciate this opportunity to, to speak and deliberate on it.
Now, Mr. Kay, are we gonna, we're gonna vote on this after the public hearing?
I believe the motion this evening is to direct staff to develop an ordinance and to hold a public hearing, certainly, and that vote this evening would establish that. After that, once you take a look at the ordinance, there would then be a separate vote on the ordinance itself, to see if there might be any changes that you wish to have in it.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion by Commissioner Williams and the amendment by Vice Chairman Helms? Indicate by aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? The next item on our agenda is item 24045, the Building Agricultural Resources and Nutrition, or as we call it, the Barn Project update. I'll recognize Chris Platae, EDC Executive Direct Director, for this item.
Thank you, Chairman Ral. Commissioner Manager Matthews, it's my pleasure, on behalf of the group, to start the discussion on the Barn presentation. Andrew, Mr. Andrew Balkum will be joining me, as well as Patrick Nylund, as we discuss some of the topics tonight. Also, in the crowd, I do want to recognize Dr. Jeff Frederick with Wingate University as one of our working group members, as well as Rachel Holesman in my office, who's been integral in developing this project. Tonight, we're going to go ahead and discuss both the background and the pathway, how we got to the barn, just briefly. And then, there's a lot of work that has been done to produce the business plan that was requested of the, of the group. And so, and then following that, we'll have recommended action steps for you guys. Since the beginning of the merger between the City of Monroe and Union County and the economic development effort back in 2013, you can see we have four tenants to our work plan. Agribusiness and precision manufacturing are on the top for a reason. They're the places that we're the most competitive, and where we have the most opportunity to create jobs and economic stability here in the county. So we've developed two work plans. Obviously, COVID screwed up making the third, so we'll be in the process of doing our third work plan here soon. But in both of those, it is very explicit, the precision manufacturing and agribusiness. And in fact, it took us a while, you know, while working on that initiative, it, it really took the presence of Andrew Balkum coming to the Extension Agency here in, in the directorship in 2018. And you can see there, we have the 2019 Comprehensive Agribusiness Enhancement and Recruitment Initiative that was kind of started right after that, particularly working with him and his, his team, which has really been beneficial to us. And we really got serious, kind of trying to find a tool. We went to Orange County, who had a dedicated economic developer in agribusiness, and then also went up to Henderson County, who had a person dedicated to that. Both of those members have moved on, so they, one went into the Extension Office up in Orange County. The other one has moved on, and so I think they're trying to merge that back with the EDC. But through that, and through visits to the North Carolina Research Campus in Kannapolis, where they have NC Phil, the Food Innovation Lab, a lot of ideas really came through that. And Rachel has a dual degree from NC State in Ag, brought that to us. And so it changed some of the way, the terminology we use, instead of agribusiness, which is kind of an older terminology. We now refer to it as the food systems. And so, because it is a bigger, it is a true system within the food production and everything about it. So we went up to two facilities, the Blue Ridge Food Ventures up in Chandler, North Carolina, which is just near Asheville, and the Piedmont Food Processing Center up in Hillsborough, just outside of Raleigh. Piedmont was the one that we really looked at as a model. And the, everything, all these facilities tend to be about the same size, and the one thing they always talked about is we need it bigger, because it was filled instantly. So I think that's one of the, the directions we've gone to with this plan. And as we were going through this process and sort of finalized the direction where we were going, we found out about Hatch Kitchen up in Richmond. And so Deputy Manager Nylund, Mr. Balkum, and myself went up with Rachel and met with some folks. I had a connection with some of the developers in that area, and so we got to meet with the developers of Hatch. Hatch was fantastic. It showed the next levels of where this can go, and how it, they have had product or companies spin out and actually make, you know, 10,000, 20,000 square feet of manufacturing space. Specifically with them was an ice cream sandwich maker. And so also, they support a food hall out of that. So it was, as you start to look at how this grows and connects, and really benefits the entire county, is where we, we know that we're on the right path, based on the visit to, to Hatch. And so if you look at the facility, originally we had a concept, again, this is just so that we have something to talk from, it was looking at a couple areas. We knew we needed the, the kitchen component, and then we needed the raw side. So the raw side, serving the agricultural community, and then the food, the true food kitchen component, serving food, food trucks to caterers, to restaurateurs, or to business, you know, entrepreneurs that want to do something. And then we also need cold storage, as well as food truck storage. And so there'll be a food truck corral, again, something Hatch has, and we were going to look to model some of their, learn from their mistakes and, and everything. And so this is sort of the model that we're now giving to the design team, and they will actually not do Chris's architecture, do real architecture. And so that, when we looked at it, we knew the location really needed to be near that Ag Crescent, which kind of goes around Monroe to the east part of the county, from the north of Monroe to south of Monroe, and all the way to the east. And that spot really was at the intersection of the expressway, Monroe Expressway and Austin-Cheney Road. And so, working with Wingate University and the town of Wingate, we originally had a site developed that was part of the Town Development Initiative. But as we started to go through that, we realized that the better location was another piece that Wingate had, just to the north of the expressway. It's easier to get utilities to it, and it's not, we're not having to wait on other parts of the Town Development Initiative to occur first. We can jump right into it. And so that's why we looked at that site. So we've established, again, the new site in the town of Wingate, and owned, it's owned by the Wingate University. The county has negotiated with the university a long-term land lease that's going to allow for the, the barn to be there for a long time. That lease is $15,001 a year to be put into a scholarship fund for Union County students. We have performed, our office did an environmental assessment on the site, just to make sure, particularly looking at organic and other food certifications. We want to make sure the site is clean. Came back with no environmental concerns. CPL Architects was reviewed by our group, and then selected by a staff in the county. And then that would be the engineering design firm. Edifice has gone through, well, as other construction folks were screened by the county, and they're going to be our CM at Risk Construction Agent. We have funds within the county that are dedicated to economic development purposes. So this is not additional money that can be used in other areas. It has to go toward economic development. And so that's the 6.9 million that hopefully will be appropriated over. And then we have lobbied and worked with the state of North Carolina to make sure that we had funding for this project and the food innovation space. And so we have $5 million directly allocated that'll come to the county, and hopefully moved over to this project.
Was that allocation specifically appropriated for this?
It is. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
It was actually specifically named Food Innovation Center of Union County. And then, business plan, again, a lot of hard work with staff from my office, with obviously Mr. Balkum's team, as well as folks from Wingate, to help complete that business plan.
Mr. Chair?
So the business plan is here, and, sorry.
No, no, continue what you were saying.
So I would say, that was my portion of the presentation. I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Balkum at this point.
Okay, well, before you do, Chris, one, one question. If you can go back to the last slide, I'll be remiss if I don't ask the $15,001. What's the significance of the $1? There's always a significance there.
We, we sent the framework to an attorney, and the attorney came back with $15,001. So I'm not, I'm not sure. We had talked about a $15,000 number. I'm sure it makes sense legally, but that's the best answer I have at this point.
Fair enough. Thanks, sir.
I'm, I'm not sure either. It's attorney-client privileged.
That, that must be a legal fee then.
The, the truth is, I don't know, but I'm happy to find out.
Cover postage of the contracts going back and forth.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Respect to members of the board, Manager Matthews. I have the distinct pleasure of representing the committee who put together this business plan that was requested by this, by this board, and I'd like to thank them for their services. Ms. Rachel Holesman with Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission, and Ms. Gina Moore from Wingate University. And I am here representing them and their work that was put together for this. And so, first off, with the business plan, we want to talk about our needs and services. And the first thing that we really need to look at is the food service industry as a whole. And from that, this is a multi-billion-dollar industry that is continuing to grow. It has a bottleneck of challenges with it, from a conglomerate of seven to eight massive producers, or producers of that final product, and then the agricultural producers at the bottom end. And there's this, there's this tight conglomerate there in the middle that really opens up a lot of opportunities for economic development within local and regional partnerships. And that's one thing that we're really trying to take advantage of with this specific project. And so the second thing we want to look at is what does the Union County market look like for us, and for such a venture? And we have many things that are going in our way in terms of this project in Union County, as well as just a whole for the county. And one is the population dynamics. And that is a youthful population, that is a population of people that are moving into this county, are interested in food, where their food comes from, the health of their food. We just had a very well-done discussion on fluoride, and that shows the, the general public's interest in what is going into their bodies. And food is certainly one of those entities. Overall, we have an above median household income. A lot of the, the, the previous slide showed similar locations. And one of the things that we have that they don't is a large agrarian base. And that is something, being one of the largest agriculture producer, producing counties in the state, we should be able to take advantage of, because the places that we ventured to and looked at actually bring in a lot of their food from regional and national partners. And that is something that we want to change in our dynamic. We want to continue to support our agrarian base and our, and our agrarian economy. The geographic location of Union County is essential to this project. As Chris showed you, there being on the crescent of the expressway is vital for transportation of goods and services. It also allows us access to various parts of the state, eastern and western parts of the state, as well as other states, with the goal... the state, as well as other states, with the goal of being to create a regional effort for this Food Innovation Center and food hub activities as a whole. We also have very little to know, no competition in this market, and that is something that we feel is a benefit to Union County. Our office, as well as economic development, receives calls weekly asking about such a facility, and where goods and services can be created in such, in such a thing as a commissary kitchen, or a shared space for food production. There are other entities that have interest in, in creating such a venture as this, as you saw in the Hillsborough, in the Orange County, and Hatch Kitchen, and they, they're something that's really building momentum, as you would say. And then I think the last thing we want to talk about with our market is our, our current base of users. We have, we have a user system that is operating, they have home base in the, in the Union County area, but they go and they provide these goods and services, and they do this work outside of Union County. So, it's dollars in economic value that we're already losing outside of, to, to adjacent counties and other regions of the state. So, in creating this space, we, we also want to think about what does it look like? And through those travels and ventures to other locations, and talking with not only the people that run those facilities, but also the users of those facilities, putting out a survey to our Union County and surrounding area population of food production companies and individuals, to find out what their needs are, how can we provide for those services for them? We came up with the items listed under the user space, and first and foremost, that constitutes a commissary kitchen, which is a shared-use kitchen. We have private suites, many of these individuals have worked in a shared-use facility for many years, and they don't have or desire the need for their own brick and mortar, but they want a little bit more of their own personal space. And these are highly valuable spaces in such a facility. And what they do is they allow the users of that space to have basically their own office, or their own production line. Again, they are of higher value for rent and user fees and services as well. Beverages and hot processing, bakery and dry processing, we, we touched on those as new product generation. The fresh cut processing is really to promote a additional opportunity for value-added services for our farming and agriculture community that already exists, that sells with our local farmers' markets, that sells with our Union County Food Hub, and sells regionally at various entities with other, other businesses and restaurants and things of that. And then we need, obviously need cold space, blasting, chilling, things such as that. And through those travels and conversations with these users, we, we realized that there is a growing need for special services. And after hearing that feedback from those users at these spaces, our committee went and dove a little deeper into these industry trends, nationwide, statewide, worldwide. And so, examples such as allergen-free, certified organic, and good agricultural practices, also known as gap certification, are value-added abilities for this facility to distinguish itself from other similarly-minded entities that are in the state, and they open up additional purchasing and selling lanes for these users. So, obviously, going through the process, we need to think about what our economic impact is to the county. And you can see the design, the, the graphic there is how this, how the barn is really the central leader of the spider web of activities that really focus on health and wellness, education, agriculture, and then overall economics of the county. And so, at its core, the barn will assist entrepreneurs in launching their food industry business. Our goal with this facility is to hold 80 to 90 clients at full capacity. And then we will also support the Union County Food Hub, which already has ties to over 40 agricultural businesses in Union County and the surrounding area, including counties in South Carolina. And so, we also, through our surveys and through our data that we've acquired, there are over 20 food trucks that are currently operating, that are home-based in the county, but again, are housed in Mecklenburg due to the lack of facilities and ability to, to do their work in their, in, in here in Union County. So, we want to think about operational costs and our income, all right? And so, you can see the graphic here that we have, the main source of our income is going to come from that, that, that shared-use facility and the processing. We also have, as Chris mentioned, the food truck corral, and ability to not only store food trucks, but allow for those operators to, to work out of those trucks, and to provide a space that they can function and, and home their business. And then lastly, one of the things that we learned is storage is extremely valuable, whether that's dry storage, whether that's cool storage, or whether that's cold storage, and there are price points for each one of those that we have, we have dove into. We also wanted to, we also want to look into financial support outside of our fee services, and that's going to be with grants and collaborations with other partners. And so, our, our group has determined our projected capacity in year one is going to be at 20%. Our expectation is when the facility opens it, opens its doors, people walk in and they get to work. We don't open the doors and then wait six months to find somebody to come into this facility. And then by our year five in 2029, we'll be closer to that 70% margin. And then our fee income is expected to exceed our operational cost in the fourth year. And so, I want to talk a little bit about the structure of this facility, and the community partners that make up the working group that has thus far gotten us to where we are today. And that starts with our Economic Development Commission, the Extension Office located at the Ag Center of the town of Wingate, our Union County Government, and then Wingate University. We have the desire to create a formation of a 501(c)(3) to really be the operational structure of the barn, once it gets going and is generating income. This will be, also be through the creation of an advisory board of supervisors. This includes our community partners, and this will provide us direction and guidance for our long-term success. And so, with this, we need to think about management, who is operating in this space, who is running it, who is, who is getting the work done? I mean, it starts with a dynamic executive director, and this person focuses there on grant writing and fundraising, budget management, and overall technical assistance, and, you know, just really management of the, of the program overall, is our liaison to the board. And then, providing director-level oversight. And then we need somebody who works with our day-to-day operations, and that's our general manager. They work with our clients, they provide technical assistance, and then they, they work with community outreach. What we gathered from our, our visits and from research done is that the general manager is the lifeblood of these organizations. As they continually bring in new clientele, they connect those clients with partners and outreach opportunities for their goods and services as well. And then future roles will include an administrative support, and then maintenance technician, both being part-time when they're hired on. And so, the other, the other package of this project is really, is really our, our youth and our students. We have a very robust culinary arts program with Union County Public Schools. We also have the newly-created Ag Technology Academy. These are just a few examples of the involvement that we would like to see from Union County Public Schools, and this includes internships, externships, work studies of the sort. We also want to work with our community colleges. You know, agriculture needs workforce readiness, food service needs workforce readiness, and we also want to make sure that we're not limiting this just to food, because with food comes health and nutrition. Our Extension Office with our 4H programs, our clubs and activities that we have there, and through our partnership, through NC Cooperative Extension, our access to NC State University and NC A&amp;T State University for internships that bring new ideas, non-traditional students into our county, for them to generate these skills to go back out into the workforce. And then with Wingate University, Wingate University has the Arts and Sciences College, as well as Health Science, also with the Food Systems major. As was previously mentioned, the scholarship fund of the $15,001 obviously is going to go to these students for their direction through this facility. We have a formal request to the board, I'd like to direct that to Deputy Manager Nylan.
If you can scroll through all of them, there are five actions we're asking for the board tonight, you can see them on the screen, but we can answer any questions that you have after the presentation that you've seen thus far.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On page 12, you mentioned here that you expect this to break even operationally in the fourth year?
Yes, sir.
What do the losses look like in the early years, and how are those being funded?
Sure. We do have a table of that in the business plan that we'd be happy to provide for you, a pro forma of the first five years of operation. And so, at year four, the balance there of exceeding those operational costs is 20,045. The projected fee income there is 458,000, and our operating cost is 438,000. So, year one through three, operating cost ranges, depending on salary, staffing, between 426,000 and 394,000.
Would be the net loss?
That's correct. That's the operating cost of the facility. That would not necessarily be the, the net loss, the loss would be after we
Okay.
Go through what income is brought in, and I do have those figures as well, if you would like to hear those.
I would.
Yes, sir. In year one, the loss would be 300,000, in year two, 120,000, in year three, 34,000.
And how would those losses be funded, those, in those early years, just through?
So, the losses that we have for the first few years of operation, ideally, we would work with our grant writing and funding sources there, with our executive director, and we would also look for county support, again, until this operation became sustainable.
Commissioner
Ultimately, go ahead.
Commissioner Williams, the 11.9 million budget amount, we are going to withhold some of that for operational funding for the first few years. The goal of this facility is not necessarily to make a lot of money, it's to not lose money, it's to provide a space. So, there are opportunities for additional grants and fundraising efforts that we hope that executive director will be a part of those first couple of years. So, we are going to keep seed money within the Economic Development Fund, but we do think there are some opportunities for additional funding outside of the county.
And ultimately, it would fall on the county's shoulders to pay for any of those losses if we don't, aren't able to accommodate through those methods.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Merrill.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement with CPL Architects and Engineers, PC substantially consistent with this agenda item, exercise any renewal or extension term options set forth in the agreement, and terminate the agreement if deemed in the best interest of the county, each in the county manager's discretion, and to also adopt Budget Amendment 21, adopt Capital Project Ordinance 344(a), accept the state fund, grant funding, and authorize the county manager to execute all documents necessary for the state grant, and to execute a lease with Wingate University, where the lease will cost $15,001 annually, beginning with the execution of the lease agreement, and will continue until 2040. For fiscal year 2024, $15,001 is available within the General Capital Fund, within the barn project, and each year thereafter will be included in the annually adopted operating budget ordinance.
Commissioner Merrill, if I may, for number five, you do not have a copy of the lease agreement included in your information. This was apparently a late add, you'll notice in the agenda item, there are only four items listed, this apparently came in later. I would recommend that, that language, rather than execute the lease with Wingate, would be to authorize the manager to negotiate and execute a lease, that way we can get that language fully final to the county's liking.
I would accept that recommendation with the motion.
Any further discussion on Commissioner Merrill's motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chairman, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be in support of the motion. You know, we've, we've, we've discussed the barn project for, you know, a couple of times now, and, you know, again, I, I think that this is a real unique opportunity. It is a, it's an extraordinary opportunity, especially given the, the history of our county, it ties in so many important things for Union County. So, whether it's agriculture, or small business, or education, you know, to me, this is, this is an opportunity for a home run, and, and so I will be in support of it. I do appreciate Deputy County Manager Nylan's comment there. I, I think it's important for us to understand that, you know, you, you had some information in your presentation there, where it was referring to food trucks, I'm not sure what the slide number is, but the information that was presented to us was, was saying that, you know, hey, th- these are currently held in Mecklenburg, there's no reason why we can't do that here in Union County. So, so I will be in support of it, I think it's a, it's a great project for Union County, and thank you very much for bringing the, the information to us.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Commissioner Merrill's motion and the friendly clarification? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed?
Thank you very much.
Our next matter of business is item 24046, Emergency Medical Services Update. I will recognize Deputy County Manager Patrick Nylan for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're at about two hours and 45 minutes, I don't think this will take very long, but just wanted to ask if the board would like a break, or if you'd all like to keep going.
Keep going.
Keep going. The purpose of this presentation tonight is to give the board an update on where we are with EMS service. We haven't talked about this in a while, there's been some turnover and some change on the board, so we felt it was important to get it back in front of the board. Currently, the contract goes through the end of this fiscal year, June 30, 2024. That extension was executed in October of 2022. Part of what the board had desired back in 2022 was for a stakeholders group to look at a proposal that was generated. That proposal was a hybrid deployment model and a tiered response system, and I'll get into what that, that means here in a second, but we put that stakeholder group together, there were 16 individuals over a series of five months to discuss the proposal, they came up with their comments, feedback on the proposal, which I'll, I'll share with you here in a second. The direction, the last direction we have from this board was at the March 20 meeting in 2023, and that was to work on a draft agreement with Union EMS at the time to incorporate some of those recommended, asked-for changes. Since then, the county has worked on that draft, we've identified some of the areas that we could possibly co-locate those fixed stations, but not much is done beyond that without a full board, and we feel that now is the time to bring it back to you all to get some direction. The, the hybrid deployment model, currently, we run a dynamic deployment model, which means there are no fixed bases. The, the paramedics, EMTs are in a truck 24 hours a day, they, they don't have stations to go to, they do have agreements with some fire departments where they can stop, heat up a meal, go to the bathroom, that sort of thing, but they don't have bases of their own. Part of the request is to go to a hybrid deployment model, which would allow for seven base stations in the rural areas and the rest of the county, your Highway 74 corridor, Waxahaw, Wesley Chapel would continue to be a dynamic model. Some of the benefits of that, community members know where those stations are, they have a fixed location, they know where that ambulance is going to be, it places those units within the community. Right now, the computer model says that in New Salem, calls aren't going to happen very often, so they never station a truck there. It's always reactive when a call does happen there. It leads to some extended call times, and there's a sense in that community that EMS is not there. Excuse me. It gives it gives those team members a place to get out of their truck, stretch their legs, go to the bathroom, sit down if they have to. It would improve morale with the current EMS employees, and recruitment is another one. They they have seen in their exit interviews that dynamic deployment is one of the main reasons they are losing folks to other agencies. They just it wears you out being in a truck for that long constantly. Drawbacks, cost considerations, we these seven fixed stations do not exist right now, so we would either have to work with community partners on colocations, or we would have to build those ourselves. Dispatch dispatch would be more complex because you'd have to look at where the dynamic trucks are and where the base stations are and make a determination on who can get there quicker. There is a potential for longer shoot times. If these folks are in the building, going to the bathroom, it might take them longer to get in a truck and get rolling than it would as if they're in the truck constantly. And the identified locations, we have a sense of where they should be. Ultimately, that might not be the right location, and it's an expensive proposition if you put a base station where it ultimately shouldn't be. The second area of the the proposal was to go to a tiered response system. Currently, all of our ambulances are ALS. That is the highest level of support you can get. Those are paramedic-level individuals, so any truck that is currently responding to calls is an ALS-level truck. Not all calls require an ALS truck, so part of the proposal is to allow for BLS units to operate with the ALS trucks. Biggest benefit of that is you can put EMTs on a BLS truck, you get more trucks on the road. There is a paramedic shortage, we've struggled to hire paramedics, so this would allow for more trucks to respond to calls. Some of the challenges with that is we have not done that in the past. Right now, if we get a call that requires medical service, we send an ambulance because they're all ALS trucks. Under this model, CCOM would have to go through a series of questions to determine whether an ALS unit is required or a BLS unit is required. That takes a little bit longer. There's also the potential to get it wrong. It's based on the caller's responses, so, you know, my my mother's having a coughing fit and you get there and it's cardiac arrest. It's just there's a potential to under-triage that. I think the intent would be to be very conservative when when we send BLS trucks, but there is the potential that you would under-triage. I'm going to turn it over to David. He's going to talk a little bit about what Union EMS has done over the past couple of years to try to recruit and retain individuals.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you, Patrick, for that introduction and high-level overview of the model recommendations we have made. If any member of the board has any questions about that, I'll be happy to expand at your pleasure. I'm going to talk about three, three different things, recruitment, retention, and then building talent pipelines. Some of the three things we've done to improve our staffing. We understand staffing's been a challenge. We've lived that every day, and we've been making very solid efforts to improve that to the best of our ability. So recruitment, we've done things like sign-on bonuses, referral bonuses. We've we've expanded sign-on bonuses most recently to paramedic students that are enrolled in a program, and we've already started to see one paramedic student sign on with us. He started with us as an EMT PRN. As soon as he's finished with his program, he'll enroll full-time. But we believe this is a valuable tool in attracting talented individuals with experience. And then school, I'll talk more about school sponsorship here in just a minute. Retention, since we know there's a paramedic shortage, there's not a lot of people going to paramedic school, retaining our talent today is more important than it's been in the past. So we have worked heavily on market adjustments, adjusting our base pay to be more competitive just with ourselves at Atrium. We realized that we weren't entirely competitive with other paramedic positions throughout the enterprise, and that's been a concerted effort. Additionally, we've done things like enhance shift differential, add weekend differential to get people to those shifts that are less desirable, and increase or adjust our sick and vacation accruals to make it more market competitive with what's out there. We've recognized, most importantly, that we are we're competing with not just EMS agencies today. We're competing with alternative care practice settings, so your doctor's offices, your urgent cares, community paramedic programs. The role of a paramedic is expanding today, and it's going to continue to expand, and we need to be competing with those entities. As part of our hiring process, one of the things we have seen is the people coming in the door today are looking at PA, they're looking at med school, and they're already enrolled in nursing programs. We're competing against their career goals from day one. So we've designed ways to try and get people engaged, invest in our current talent and our in our future of the agency. So we built a talent pipeline. Back in 2022, I was able to talk to the board, or last year, I was able to talk to the board a little bit, in which I addressed our EMT Academy. We hired sixteen people off the street, had no medical experience whatsoever. We put them through a very fast-paced and rigorous EMT program with the help of South Piedmont. We graduated ten. I thought that was very successful. So we moved on to paramedic. That's really where the greatest need is. So in the fall of 2022 cohort, we started four. We graduated four this last fall in August. Those paramedics are all with us today, and they are out functioning in the field, taking care of our community. In the spring of 2023, we started, we started four. We are going to be graduating another two next month. We are very excited for those two. And then this fall in 2023, we started one at Central Piedmont and one at South Piedmont. One of the things we have noticed is teammates and some of the people we see don't want to go to paramedic school. They're happy with being EMTs. They they're happy with the advanced, that middle ground. They don't want to advance, they don't want to take on that responsibility. And getting those two during that time was pulling teeth, just to be honest. It was quite difficult. They want, where was the upside for them? That that's what they wanted to see, and that goes back to our retention model. How do we invest in them for down the road? And we're paying these people to go to school. We're paying twenty-four hours a week for them to be in a classroom, develop themselves, build themselves, and come work for us as paramedics down the road. And then we just started this month, three paramedic students at South Piedmont, and we are hopeful that in one year's time, we will be seeing them graduate as paramedics as well. But in addition to our talent pipeline that we've built, we've continued traditional hiring methods. In 2022, we hired thirty-nine people, and I'm going to show you at the end of all these three efforts, the the progress that we've made. And then in 2023, we hired thirty-five people, which included seven paramedics, twenty-six EMTs, so nine and nine paramedics in 2022. So that sounds like a lot, and we've we've been burning the candle, trying to get people in the door, find creative ways, and this is our staffing trend. Blue line is paramedic and the orange is EMT. And what you'll notice is, for the first time since 2021, next month, we are projecting to be at our lowest vacancy rate since the pandemic and the challenges that we've encountered as a result. We did have an uptick in, it looks like September twenty-three. That's a little artificially inflated because those EMTs graduated paramedic school, adding to our EMT vacancy, becoming paramedics, decreasing our paramedic staffing vacancy. And as you can see, that line is coming back down pretty aggressively as we hire another nine EMTs that are onboarding here soon. So some considerations, items on the slide, I believe are worth considering and and having some some information and support where we're we're coming from. We're actively addressing the pay to make it sustain, to make this a sustainable profession for our providers, and we have proposed changes that will help provider stress and possibly reduce burnout. We're not alone, as as shown by some of the data on the page, and our thoughts as agencies across the United States reevaluate how they deliver care to their communities. And so job stress replaced pay is the number one reason why EMTs and paramedics leave the profession. Pay was considered a contributing factor to the stress and departure within the first year of employment. And according to this study, burnout rates nearly doubled between 2015 and 2022, and we can all probably assume why. And NAMT conducted a survey in twenty-two, in which they surveyed four hundred and fifty agencies across forty-seven states, two overseas territory, and one reservation. Sixty-five percent reported a decrease in applications, which I can attest to. We've definitely seen a decrease in applications. Forty-nine percent reported they lengthened their response time goals, which we have not done. Thirty-seven percent implemented alternate response to low acuity calls. They sent Uber or another EMT in a solo Prius to respond to these things. And twenty-eight percent moved from ALS tiered to a tiered deployment model. So considerations, I have that we're not alone, and and some of the things we're recommending, and we are very diligent about the information that supports or the effort that we've put into supporting our decisions and being very cautious in our approach to make sure that Union County citizens are getting the best service possible. And I'll turn it back over to Patrick to wrap up the discussion.
So just a little discussion and some feedback from the board. EMS staffing is a nationwide issue. We have seen that, we've seen that locally, we've seen it within the surrounding counties, we've seen it in the state and and the country. Higher call volumes, short staffing, it's leading to burnout, it's leading to longer call times. It's, you know, I'd just like to take the opportunity, the employees that we do have have worked their butt off over the last three years responding to the call. We've seen an increase in call volume with less employees, so it's just it's math. They are working more, and they're doing a very good job. It's just we need we need more folks. We're doing the best we can to remain competitive. We're competing against, you know, not only what David mentioned, but Walmart, fast-food joints are paying twenty-two, twenty-three dollars an hour now, so it's just a reality of where wages are. The contract ends at the end of this fiscal year. The last two extensions have been short-term extensions. That doesn't give us a lot of certainty long-term, so we would like to try to get something that is a multi-year agreement to get some stability within EMS, whatever that whatever that looks like. And any additional information that you all would like to see in addition to what you've seen tonight? We do plan to talk about this at the retreat, so it gives us a few weeks that if there is additional information, we can put that together and bring it back to you. So at that point, I'll turn it over to you all if you have any questions for myself or David. And if the information you don't have tonight and you'd like to get to me, we can we can still provide that for the retreat.
Well, David, it seems to me like in the healthcare profession, you know, if you start with doctors, there's a shortage of doctors, so you use more PAs and more nurse practitioners. And of course, there's a shortage of paramedics, so we're going to have to rely more on EMTs and advanced EMTs. I mean, I just think that's reality. That may not be what we want to do, but I think that's probably what we're going to have to do to a certain degree. What's your assessment of that?
Yes, sir. I agree a hundred percent. In the hospital, saying, colleague Denise can talk about this more, the role and capacity of PAs has expanded. Nursing has expanded the shortage, and nursing has led to the expansion of use of LPNs and CNAs and med techs, and everybody's performing to the to the peak of their license. And and that's really what we're trying to utilize. We have a lot of untapped potential and talent within our organization at the EMT and at the advanced EMT level that running an all-paramedic organization, one is is not feasible based on staffing shortages, but we're not using the skills and putting those to work to serve the citizens.
And I'd like to apologize to Ms. White, I didn't mean to leave out the nurses, because of course, a shortage of RNs mean you'll use more LPNs and, like you said, med techs and things like that. It's kind of, you know, goes throughout the whole profession, I think.
Yes, sir. And just from a personal reference, my wife's a PA, she works in surgery. I mean, she, her workload is absolutely astonishing, to speak the truth, and they they live in the environment she works in, and it's it's lived in the ERs and on the floors and the hospitals, the urgent cares. You go to your primary care, your primary care is most likely an NP or a PA these days. It's not a physician, so.
And have y'all seen these things like shift premium pay, things like that? Has that helped?
So occasionally, yes. We have used critical staffing incentives in the past. We have tried to wean off of that. Incentives are a good motivator for a very short period of time, but prolonged use can have unintended consequences. So we have tried to back some of those off as we have slowly gained paramedics and EMTs into the organization and use them as needed.
And do you have a lot of what you talked about earlier, EMTs that are are perfectly good being EMTs and and not want to move on up to the paramedic level?
Yes, sir. I have quite a bit. I don't know an exact number. I have one in particular who, and this is a very brief story for you, who he's been an EMT probably for about ten years. He's a great EMT, and I've I've had conversations with him to go to paramedic school, and his response was, I don't need the additional stress. Thank you. I see the opportunity, but I'm going to pass. I like working with my partner. They they have great bonds with each other. I like my shift, and I don't want the extra stress. You can't pay me enough to take that on. Thank you.
And and one more question, sir. Do you have any idea what percentage of calls where a paramedic-level trained person is needed out of all the calls that you get? Do you have any idea roughly?
I could probably give you a statistic on the other end of that spectrum. We conducted a retrospective study of two years. I believe we looked at 2020 and 2021, if memory serves me correctly. Out of that, one-third of calls received less than one intervention, which included cardiac monitor and no ALS care. So one-third of calls can be attributed to a BLS provider safely. And that was based on our response and outcomes. And Mr. Nylund talked about the inaccuracy of information being provided dispatch. We looked at our call data. So those biases that are that come through dispatch were included in that that data set as well. So thirty-three percent of calls roughly were perfectly suitable based on our existing outcomes for a BLS provider to handle.
Commissioner Merrill.
Have we had any communications or conversations with the CTE program over at Union County Public Schools? Because more and more students are not wanting to go to a four-year university, so would you like to speak to that question?
Last time you, last time I spoke, you had asked me if there had been any work with Union County Public Schools, and Union County Public Schools took that and chartered that on themselves, and kudos to them, they've done a phenomenal job. At Piedmont High School, I believe it is this semester is the first EMT program, and I think they're doing it as a fourth, fifth block. And then next year, they are looking at adding an additional school for EMTs. All of those students, what majority of those students are doing their clinical field orientation in time with Union EMS, and we're hoping to attract and retain the the best quality students to meet our staffing needs.
I'm really happy to hear that because we have an extraordinary, I think there are two schools that have the firefighting academy, and I know there's always a wait list for the for the nursing or CNA program at Piedmont High School. I would, I'm very happy to hear that there's been some movement on that because I truly believe that Union County, if we can, you know, grow our own, that would be a really great return on investment with, you know, extraordinary students that really don't want to take on a college debt and just want to go straight to work and and be part of their community. So I'm happy to hear that, but, you know, most importantly, I just want to thank all of you for everything that you do in in our community because everywhere you go, you hear about staffing shortages, but this is one you don't want to hear about. But thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. Might I add, in addition to the high school age recruitment pool, we have a juniors program, formerly the explorers program. Historically, that program's been about forty kids strong. My staff has worked hard to get out to high schools and recruit. We have over ninety students in that program today, so we are extremely proud of the work that they have done.
On top of your full-time job.
Yes. Is there any other questions?
Any other questions from the board? Yes, sir.
Yeah, in terms of additional information and preparing for the retreat, I'd like to get more data on dispatches, time of dispatches, when, you know, dispatches weren't made at all, areas of the county where dispatches were made, basically similar to what we had, I think, back in twenty-twenty-two when we wrestled with this issue. I'd like to get some more granularity on the dispatch dispatch data.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
Our next matter of business is item twenty-four zero one-one, appointments to boards and committees. I believe we have a list of the committees.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question to to staff, or maybe this is better directed to Mr. Kay. As we go through these, do we need to make these appointments separately for each committee, or can we do this all in one? What would be the proper process? Can you offer some clarifications, sir?
That's a matter of efficiency. If you would like to make all of the appointments in one swoop, you can do that, if there are not amendments or changes that you wish to add.
Have all the members had a chance to look at the applications and are okay with it? If that's, if they are, we'll just make one swooping motion. If that's not the case, we can discuss each one. All in favor of making one swooping motion, say aye. All right. I make the motion that we approve all the folks listed for the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Committee, the Library Board of Trustees, and the Monroe Union County Development Advisory Board. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Our next matter is the county manager's comments. Mr. Matthews.
The only comment, and this is really just information for the board. We are working to put together a joint meeting with the Board of Education. We hope to have that later in February after our retreat, so we'll get a date to you for that that works for both entities, and we'll obviously work with location with the school board on that. So just want to make you aware, we're working on that. And that's all I have.
Commissioner's comments. We'll start on the end with Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep it brief. I'd just like to thank again all the citizens who showed up tonight, who shared their thoughts and informal comments. Jennifer Bellagi, I think that's how you pronounce it, Greg, Harold, Dennis, Joel, thank you again. Thanks again to the professionals who showed up and shared their thoughts and professional opinions on the fluoride issue. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Merrill.
I want to echo the same, that, you know, it's really encouraging to see so much participation from the community and to see both sides full of people that really care about what what's going on in these meetings, and just thank you for all of your feedback and helping us with these heavy lifts. So thank you.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would also agree. I think that coming out here and seeing the room completely full was a great sign. It's a great sign of participation of of our community and and what's going on here in Union County. So thank you for everyone that showed up. Thank you to our to our staff, as always, for for staying late tonight. I thought it was great to get more information about the BARM project. Again, I'm I'm a very, well, I'm very optimistic about that project. I think it's a fantastic opportunity. I also agree with Commissioner Merrill and Commissioner Williams. You know, as far as the the speakers that we had tonight, I thought that the engagement on a on a topic such as fluoride was fantastic. So the the speakers that we had, both informally and and again, the the professionals that took the time to be here, thank you very, very much. So with that, also, I have to say this because, you know, it is the sixteenth of January, and my wife and I are celebrating our nine-year anniversary. So I also want to thank her for putting up from up with me. And and so with that, I'll close my comments and say good night. Thank you.
And I'll echo what the vice chair said on that last report. I held him here a good time tonight, just for that reason. But thank you so much to staff and to all the county employees, everybody that came to the meeting. I know I know it went on for a while, but I appreciate your comments. I appreciate EMS coming and talking with us, getting an update, and just thank you for all that you do, and I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.